Calls me in order, please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united states, united as one.
Thank you, please turn off your cell phones. Did you guys fight amongst yourselves and find a volunteer?
No, but I'll do it.
You'll do it?
Short one.
Okay, alright, let's take care of a little bit of business first.
Besides this one.
Just that one, let's get rolling on those.
Okay, resignation, accept resignation. I move that upon the recommendation of the acting superintendent, resignation of district clerk Lisa A. Almasi be accepted effective February 28th, 2013.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor? Aye. Opposed, motion carries.
Appointments, appoint district clerk. I move that upon the recommendation of the acting superintendent Barbara Tomasulo be appointed as district clerk of the board effective March 1st, 2013.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor? Aye. Opposed, motion carries.
Appoint purchasing agent. I move that upon the recommendation of the acting superintendent Lorraine Ingrassi be appointed as purchasing agent effective March 1st, 2013.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor? Aye. Opposed, motion carries.
Appoint hearing official. I move that upon the recommendation of the acting superintendent Lorraine Ingrassi be appointed as a hearing official for participation in the federal child nutrition program effective March 1st, 2013.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor? Aye. Opposed, motion carries.
Change budget hearing date. I move that upon the recommendation of the acting superintendent, the budget hearing date be changed from May 6th, 2013 to May 7th, 2013 due to the change in the budget vote date. No budget hearing date must be between seven and 14 days of the budget vote.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor? Aye. Opposed, motion carries.
I move that upon the recommendation of the acting superintendent, the signature both manual and/or reproduced by machine of Ms. Lorraine Ingrassi be designated as the official signature for the disbursement of district funds.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor? Aye. Opposed, motion carries.
Bond personnel. I move that upon the recommendation of the acting superintendent Barbara Tomasulo for district clerk and Lorraine Ingrassi interim finance director be bonded under the blanket bond of the district.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor? Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Alright, thank you, that carries, that takes care of a lot of our paperwork so we're all in compliance with everything from district clerk. Just a quick note for the audience, for those of you who haven't met Mrs. Sandy Anzalone, she will be our new superintendent starting on the, keep forgetting, 18th, right? 18th. You look well rested from your vacation?
Yeah.
Alright, good.
I'm ready.
Okay, good. Welcome, and just a reminder that on a week from tonight at 7:00 PM we'll be having a little reception for Sandy out in the foyer in front of the auditorium, so please attend. Okay, with that I guess we're gonna talk a little bit about budget. Quite a bit about budget. Let's see. Mr. Schaefer, you and your colleagues have been hard at work.
Yes.
Working through a new set of numbers? Did you want to go?
You had to go through the presentation first?
Well, we could do, yeah, sorry, you updated a few things there, haven't you? Okay, let's go ahead and do that.
So we've been able to update fund balance as of late last week. We do anticipate that our revenues will exceed expenditures by about $425,000. So we should have a surplus at the end of this year.
So around four, your best guess right now is a surplus of 425,000?
425,000.
Okay, so that we can roll into next, to the gap, okay?
Correct. Draft two, we've updated the figures to show changes in salaries, benefits, you know, anything else. We have about a $1.7 million deficit. I'm showing about $900,000 being used by appropriated fund balance since we didn't use the 601 for this year. 514 for retirement contribution reserves, and again, you can use reserves in any way you want. So that's where I'm coming up with the $276,000 unfunded deficit.
Does that taken effect the, the now rapidly approaching sequester?
Um, yes, I did build about 10% of our federal funds into salaries and benefits here.
Does that 275 include the surplus from 13?
Yes.
So the 10% for the federal funds, so 10% of what we're not going to get, you've?
That, that's what I've anticipated.
That we'll have to pay somehow, some way?
Somehow.
The rest of it, we can eliminate those programs? Or are we expecting to eliminate those programs? Or can?
Some we can. The special ed, I don't believe we can. And our title funds that provide AIS services, I don't believe we can eliminate those either.
Even though they're not, they're not funding them, they're mandating them, we gotta still do them?
That's what we're told. I know some districts are eliminating, they're, they will be eliminating positions.
They're gonna eliminate them anyways and take your chances to see what happens?
And I don't know what they've budgeted for, what types of positions, but my colleagues, some of my colleagues have said that they will be cutting the grant funding and eliminating positions.
Can you, who would be one of them?
Lake Shore.
Lake Shore.
Mm-hmm.
So they're basically one for one, whatever they're losing from the sequester, they're eliminating the program to go with it?
Pretty much. They, they will eliminate, you know, part of their grant.
Part of the grant.
And if it's a salary, it might be supplies and materials, again, I don't know how they've budgeted.
Okay.
Certain things.
So you budget roughly 10%?
It's about $60,000.
Okay.
In additional salaries here.
Okay.
And have you built any, well, you're gonna tell us on a later chart, I think, of what you put into here from the last discussions?
Okay. And again, I know this is hard to read, but this is just an example of, you know, our estimated fund balances for 2013. And then by using the appropriated fund balance in the retirement contribution reserve, we show a decrease for 2014. And again, 1213, you can see there's a slight surplus, the amount wouldn't fit, so I put it in, and it shows our budget gaps over the next four years.
Lisa, can you go back on the previous one? And where it says cannot be used to offset, is it just that row?
Everything in red.
Everything in red.
Okay, the major changes from draft one, again, we included the salary and benefits due to the sequestration. We should no more March 1st. This includes work, it's about $32,000 work on the co-gen catalytic converter. Again, I just think I said the last time, we can use the repair reserve to fund this, voter approval will be needed. Or you can do a capital project and receive building aid, which is at 78.2%.
But you put that into the budget line, so that's, that's paid for, so the question is where's the money gonna come from?
Right.
And it's just a matter of which reserve we're using anyways?
Right.
To, to fund the gap?
Uh-huh.
Okay.
Is there a minimum amount of money for, for capital projects to?
$10,000.
Just minimum 10, and this is 30 something?
Right.
Okay.
Okay, this also includes new contracts. Equipment and fuel costs were reduced in this budget as well.
Can you give me a little bit of details of what do you mean by the equipment and fuel costs?
Fuel cost, I believe she budgeted $250,000 for gasoline and diesel fuel.
Except for transportation?
Yeah, and I reduced it to the current year level, I think it was 215,000. Equipment, I did, I did reduce the buildings to the current year level. You know, we had some departments that had $17,000 in equipment for one department.
For example, which, which department?
Music.
And how much?
$17,000.
Worth of equipment?
Mm-hmm, that they wish to purchase.
That they, they wanted to purchase?
Correct.
Does that happen every year?
No.
Do you know which equipment was, or?
There were some musical instruments.
Yeah.
Like the tuba.
Fund balance and reserves, the fund balance is the use of excess revenue over expenditure, or we use the excess revenue over expenditures in the current year to increase the appropriated fund balance and increase reserves. Reserves, you need to update the plan to use for 13, 14, and beyond, and I know we discussed that last time as well. That's all I have there.
That's his house.
I can do so.
And we can put it on the big, big board also. You have paper copy, if you wanna take notes on it, and we'll project it as well.
How you got mine with me?
This is a most recent draft of the budget gap and the elimination. Potential sources of cuts, deletions, reductions.
And increases in revenue?
Increases in revenues. And you see the budget gap up there at two, this is the same document that I got from you, right?
Yeah.
276,000 is the gap right now, and?
With the reserve assumption?
Yeah.
Yep. Usage assumption.
As we scan down some of the changes that were made in this, the suggestion to increase the tax levy to the 2% plus, plus the exclusions that are allowed, use of facilities, which is something we've talked about before. K-2, keeping the newly hired K-2 teacher at third through sixth grade, replacing the retirement at third through sixth grade, some changes in the music program. We did make a change here with the possibilities because we wanted to give the Board of Education some options, so we made a change with the gifted talented program, there's possibility of reducing, it's a .6 position, of reducing it from .6 to .4, and then there's also the possibility of just deleting the entire position.
Mr. Schaefer, can I interrupt you?
Yes.
Just a process point, do we wanna, I think one of the things you wanted to try and get done tonight was at least get some consensus, one way or another, on some of these line items? Do you want us to go for each one and dig into a debate, or go over a high level first and then come back? What would be your preference?
Either way is fine with me. We would like a little more direction so we can just take things off the list here, and if you have other things you want us to explore a little more, we can do that too.
Okay.
And if you can start with the tax levy first?
Okay.
Because by March 1st, I have to report that.
Okay. So the question is, do we wanna go above the 2%?
Right.
Up to 2.1, was it 2.8 or something is what we allowed to with all the mathematical gyrations?
Let me see if it's showing percentage on here.
I mean, it's roughly around, same as last year, about 2.8 or so.
116,000.
Comes out 216. I think when we set out to begin the budget process, we said we wanted to be at 2%, and the rationale we also used last year was 2% is a fair increase, and it's also easier to explain versus 2.8 when people see the difference in numbers. So, do, does anyone have some thoughts about wanting to go above 2% right now? So we gotta get that out of the way. Now, nothing we can decide tonight is set in stone, but it at least gives us some direction where we wanna go. Any thoughts about that one?
What's the difference, like the, do we know possibly how much money that is?
117,000.
$117,000. So if we raise taxes from, instead of 2%, which we're already saying we're willing to raise taxes, 2% to 2.9%, I think it is, the difference would be 116, 117,000.
So we'd be at a deficit, or a budget gap of over 350,000?
That actually would reduce the budget gap.
If we raise the tax, yeah.
If we increase the tax.
Right, right. But if we, if we stick to 2%, we'd be at 350,000.
No.
No, it would be the 276.
No, I think Mr. Henderson is saying if we don't go to the 2% plus exclusions, the budget gap then goes up to 391,000.
Yeah, right.
We add these two figures together.
No.
No.
No, because the 2% is already included in our revenue.
Right.
2% increase.
With using reserves, the gap right now is around 276, and we'll come back to the reserve question.
It doesn't help us eliminate the gap.
This would help against that gap. Now, I will tell you, I was looking at some of the voting numbers this, this afternoon, and first of all, going above the gap, I think we'd have a challenge, I don't think it would pass, because you have to have 60% vote, and I think we've only had one year in the last 10 years we've been above 60%. It was interesting to notice the voting approval percentages. As our tax increases have come down, because they had a lot of years around 5 and 6%, the budgets were passing in the 50 to 54, 55% range, and the budget, when we kept it down, lowered around 2%, the pass rate went way up. So there's clearly a number of people watching how high we're raising taxes.
Yeah, I saw that too, I think, I think it was the lowest or the highest approval rating in a few years?
It was last, yeah, last year it was, yeah. So.
Well, at 2% plus exclusions, you need 50%.
Correct, that's correct. That's correct. But what I'm saying is that I think if, the closer we can keep it, the lower we can keep it, obviously the happier the taxpayers can be.
Because if we go down with this vote, then we have one other chance to put it up for vote?
Yeah.
That's correct.
If it fails again, then we go back to?
Last year's, the current year's budget, we can't exceed the current year's budget.
On the second failure, right? Yeah. So, my thought for now is to leave it at the 2%. It's kinda where we were last year, seemed to be a fair amount, the public seemed to be happy, kind of accepting of that number, but certainly open for discussion. Anybody have any strong feelings either way on that?
I think that's the intent of the tax gap. I think 2% was, I think that's what it was designed to do, is to maintain some control over taxpayers.
I kinda like the idea, Steve.
You okay with that? Anybody else? Alright, so there's your first answer, let's, in our straw model budget here, let's keep that at the 2% number. The next one's charge for use of facilities. Were you able, Mr. Schaefer, pull that report from last year? We looked at this last year on what we could do, were you able to?
We haven't got that yet.
Haven't got that, okay. Just headlines on what, for those of you who are new on the budget this year, and for those of you who were last year, correct me if I'm wrong, but we looked at this number last year, we decided not to do it last year, and the thought was about 2/3 of that money or something like that was Boys and Girls Club payments. It was a large number, it was a high percent of it, I believe. It was either half or 2/3 was Boys and Girls Club utilization. And then the rest was a concern, how much of that would we actually lose those customers, if you will, if we started charging? So, I would propose for now, until we can see what the numbers are, let's just leave it like it is, not, not doing anything with it?
Alright.
And then maybe for the next meeting, if we can see and update a list on that, that would, that would be helpful. Is that fair?
Yep.
Steve, on that note, can we, can we get started with next year with, with looking at closing the GLP?
Right.
What's the process for that?
Well, we'll, yeah, we gotta figure out a timetable and a plan, and Sandy would be very instrumental in helping us get started on that, but?
And we did include money in the budget.
Did you, okay, good. There's some money in there.
10,000?
How much did you put in there for that?
10 grand, was it?
10, that was actually the number Scott gave it?
Yep.
Okay, good. So. Is that okay? So we'll cut, that one, we'll put a, kind of, leave that one on hold, but we'll revisit that one pretty heavily?
Yep.
Okay. And going down the list here, for, next one is to retain the one FTE. Now, this is the FTE, we added it into first grade for this year, right?
Correct.
Yes.
And the suggestion is adding that back again for next year.
Yes.
I guess Chris and I looked, Chris and I looked at the numbers this afternoon, and we were talking to Mr. Schaefer about some contract stuff. If we added one position in, if we can, put this position in there, I think it drops the numbers on average for those grades to about 20 per class. If that was somehow, if you were somehow able to utilize that person to leverage first and second grade, and incoming K looks about 80 people, that would give us roughly 20 per class in every grade level in GLP, right?
If those figures hold, yes.
So, my, my recommendation is, if, as long as we can find the money somewhere to get our gap closed, I would recommend that we, we put that position back in there.
And in the past, we have had a multi-age in GLP.
Is that right? Okay, well, I figured, I thought maybe what we could do is give the position and let Mrs. Carter figure out how to best use it, and the staff best figure out how to utilize that, that position again. Anybody have thoughts about adding that in or not adding that in?
My only concern is, and I have to hear from Mrs. Carter, that she said every year the same thing happens. Now, did they show 80 kids coming in last spring, and then they had 90? Are we showing again 80 this year, and maybe we'll get 90 again, and we'll run into the same problem again?
We, we are trying to develop a strategy that'll give us a chance to make the decision late in the summer, if, if the figures, if the numbers are close, on whether it should be a K-1, a 1-2, just a 2, and we're still devising this strategy. But you're right, it's hard to know when, some parents choose to register the Tuesday before school starts on the Wednesday.
Yeah. But with this, by doing this though, we're already starting out at 1, 2, let's see, at 1, first and second grade, we're already starting out at 20 per class. So even if you've got four or eight in there, it doesn't get us up to 25, we're still down to the 21, 22 range for those classrooms. So we'd be way ahead.
And the reason for that is because that first grade teacher's a floater. So she doesn't, she doesn't have her own class.
Right now.
So that's not even putting her into the mix. So if we do get students added at the last minute, this will allow us to make those adjustments wherever they, wherever they fall in the grade.
Depends how they decide to use it, I guess.
Right.
But, so the biggest exposure would be if kindergarten shows up a huge number above 80. So, and you'd probably have to have, what, 80, 88 to start getting concerned, so you have to probably have more than eight show up to start getting concerned about that, I'm just looking at the historical numbers, so, it's, it's a good start, I think.
It saves the time of advertising for the position and reacting to it, but being two or three months behind, being able to do something about it. I'm sure Mrs. Carter would say, and the GLP teachers would say, the smaller numbers would best be reflected at the, at the lower the grade level, at kindergarten particularly, but like I said, we're devising a strategy that could be a, a late decision based on the numbers we have coming in during the summer.
Okay. So we okay with tentatively adding that position in there? Assuming we get, get all the other numbers to add up? Okay, so there's another answer for you?
We passed around the most latest enrollment report.
Oh, yeah.
Just because we had some figures out there, they haven't changed a lot, but you did have an old enrollment report. We're down to grades 3 through 6 recommending replacing the, the positions from the retirement of Mrs. Noak. Now, that, that deletion would have been in third grade, the second grade going to third grade, where the class size is, would be about 24.6 if we keep them in four sections, but we can get them down to, with replacing Mrs. Noak, we can get that down to about 20 per section. And that's my recommendation.
I, I would, I would say if we can get, if we can get the numbers to work again, that that would, I think we should go ahead and look at that one too. Anybody have concerns about that, or? So that'd be putting into, so that's basically backfilling Mrs. Noak and maintaining five sections in third grade, right?
Yes.
Okay.
I see, I have the gifted talented program there. It's a .6 position right now, three days a week at Eden Elementary, and I broke it down, so there'd be a little more choice for the Board of Education of reducing it by .2, and you see that in the kind of brownish color? Or just deleting the position altogether?
Now, I guess we'll, we'll come back up to the, the other one there. If, if we did make a change in the gifted and talented, is there another way, especially since we've freed up time with the, with the scheduling change for band and orchestra, is there another way with the staff that you have down there to still provide those kinds of opportunities for the kids? Is there some other way?
I would say during the RTI periods that the classroom teachers in either ELA or math will be working with their students who don't go out for RTI. And so my answer to that would be yes. You know, we are, not only by virtue of the APPR process want to move all our, our 2s to 3s, we want to move our 3s to 4s, we want to move our 4s up.
Right.
So, I also have, I think it was Mrs. Henry who asked for some information from the state website, state ed website on gifted talented, and I have that with me, I'll get that out a little bit. The literature is a little bit, not very clear, it also talks about if you receive funding for gifted education, which we, which we do not. So, it was not, it was not clear whether it has to be a unique person providing this, where in many school districts, it's the classroom teachers who are providing this. It also talks about giftedness outside of the academic realms of ELA, for example, and in the realm of music.
Well, I, I do have a question on this. Mr. Schaefer, how much is it mandated?
Like I said?
Is it mandated?
No.
No.
No. So, I guess I would propose on that one, if, if we, if we can see a plan that shows us we're still going to provide those services some way, then I think we can make that substitution. Anybody else have thoughts about that one?
I'm just curious about the, about the .2, what would that have afforded, what would a .2 have afforded us?
Right now, the gifted talented program is a three-tiered program. The top students, top 5% nationally in grades, 4, 5, and 6 meet with the gifted talented teacher twice a week during one of their RTI periods. In grade 4, there's also a program called revolving door, where kids who are in the top 25% nationally meet with the gifted talented teacher during five-week units of interest. That would be the one that I think would, would be deleted if we were to reduce by .2. And our third grade students who are new to our building, and they're the ones who go to Mrs., Mrs. Lavine once a week during an RTI period, so kids who are in RTI are not available to her at that time. But it's her way of getting to know the, the other, the gen ed students. So, the thing that would be deleted would be the, what's called a tier 2 or revolving door.
How do you define the top kids? By their grade average, or?
We look at a whole, whole bunch of things, and the, you know, their performance in the classrooms, one of them, their performance on standardized tests. She also does interviews of the students and of the parents, so she's looking at many, many factors to make that decision.
Currently, she's a, it's a .6 position, right?
Yes.
So you're saying, if you could, you could go to a .2 position if you eliminated the grade 4 revolving door?
Yes.
It'd be a .4 position.
So you're removing .2 from the .6?
Right.
Okay.
Did I hear that right? Yes.
Yeah, it'd be a .4.
Oh, it's okay, it's a .2 reduction. Gotcha. Okay.
So, so right now, it's at, what, .6?
Right now, it's .6, three days a week.
So what direction are we giving? Are we saying that we want Mr. Schaefer to go back and verify or give more information about what would happen during the RTI times in the classroom if we didn't have gifted and talented? Is that where we are at this point?
That's what I, that's what I'd like to see, if we have a way of providing that in a different format, and still provide those kids the opportunities. But you seem to think we can pull that off, could we see a little bit, a little bit of detail around that?
Absolutely.
Before the end of the budget season?
What's the population of those classes?
You mean how many students in the grade level, or how many students in those particular classes?
In those particular classes?
I, I'd say it's about 14 to 18 kids, depends on the year, per grade level.
Okay.
In the, that's in the tier 1 with 4th, 5th, and 6th grade. In the, that's in the Tier 1 with 4th, 5th, and 6th grade. In the Tier 2, the 4th grade Revolving Door, it's units of interest for five weeks, top 25%. And that varies a little more depending on what the unit is, because some are more interesting to students than others. We've made the GT program in, last year and this year, more focused on reading and writing in the hopes that it would help us with our Level 4 and our mastery students in ELA particularly.
Steve, the only problem I have with this is this Gifted and Talented has been a really slow kill for the last six or seven years. It started out in kindergarten, and it was in kindergarten, 1st, 2nd, all the way up through 6th grade. And it's been a real slow kill.
Okay.
I would recommend letting it go and focusing on some of our gifts that we already have here at the school, and enhance those instead, such as your music and your art, which are for Gifted and Talented also. That's my suggestion.
I think that's getting at a different, different set of skills of what they were teaching in this program. But I, I think we basically look at what we think we can put together in that program, and still give them the same opportunities.
Okay.
So, yeah. Yeah, I think, Barb, what you're saying basically is we need to kind of take, take a step back and figure out what we're doing with the whole program overall, along those lines, right?
It's been going, you know, it was sad in the kindergarten when they took it away from the kindergartners, and they took it away from the first graders and the second. All those kids aren't getting it now. And they, they don't have that benefit.
Okay. All right, well this will be-
So I think it's time to rethink it, instead of dragging it out any longer.
Okay. Anybody else have any thoughts?
Does this, I mean, those numbers look right, though? I mean, .6, it's 41K, and .2, it's 13K, and we're actually looking at .4. I think the 13K would be a higher number?
The .2 would be a reduction in .2. So the .4 would be the difference between the two numbers?
Okay.
Okay?
Okay.
In the realm of art and music-
Yeah, can you go back up to the K through 2 one? Or is it the same approach on both?
It's the same approach. For instance, in 5th and 6th grade, where we have five sections of 5th and five sections of 6th, in essence, semestrying 5th and 6th grade art and music. So 5th grade general music would be one semester, while 6th grade had art that semester, and the next semester they'd switch. It would be a reduction in about five teaching periods of art and five teaching periods of music. Right now, our students have six specials in a five-day week, two phys eds, art, music, library, computer lab. So it would be a reduction of one special, five specials, five days, still makes it a contractual obligation of the teacher's prep time. And we could pull that off in 5th and 6th grade. We could also pull that off in 3rd and 4th grade. If we look up on top with, at GLP, it's a possibility for 1st and 2nd as well.
What would be used to fill that time?
It would be classroom instruction. So the students in a five-day rotation might go phys ed, first semester art, library, phys ed, computer lab. They'd just pick up, they'd pick up 45 more minutes in the classroom. The next semester, they would go to music instead.
Classroom's usually math, ELA, science, that kind of stuff.
Social studies, yes.
Social studies, yeah. So the core stuff, okay.
Mr. Schaefer, does this eliminate teacher, or does it make part-time, like, let's go over full-time, how does that work?
If you were to do this, for instance, with 5th and 6th grade, it would reduce the 5th and 6th grade, the 5th and 6th grade art load by five periods, and the music load by five periods.
Now, is it chorus, or is it general music, or is it?
In those departments, the certification and the tenure's K-12. So it depends on who is on the bottom of the, in tenure and/or if they're part-timers.
But if this general music goes, which we refer to as part-time?
Yes.
Those are all general music classes?
So it is, it is general music?
Yes. Oh, I'm sorry, did I mishear the question? It was-
Slightly different version of the question, that's okay. That would be the next question. Are you able to, for the GLP one, though, are you actually able to get that kind of savings of a .04, .08? Do you think you can schedule in such a way to get that savings?
Personally, I would not suggest doing it in the lower grades. I would suggest it more probably being logistically possible to start in the upper grades, 5th and 6th. If we're going to do this model, I would suggest 5th and 6th. Some might say with the addition of their band, orchestra, chorus, instrumental lessons, at least the music part of it is particularly addressed for students who are-
I do have another question. Did you, did you speak with any of the art and music teachers about this, or is this your version of it?
This was us, our first, our brainstorming-
Our meaning-
The administrative unit.
Administrative. So you didn't talk to the music department or the art department about this?
What percentage of students in 5th and 6th grade are in either band, orchestra, or chorus? They would have, for example, that would have that as their music if we were to remove general music from their schedule?
Well, I'm not saying we remove general music, I'm saying we semester it. So one semester they have it, one semester they have art.
But if during the semester that they have art, they're also in chorus or band, what percentage of students is that in 5th and 6th?
I do not have those numbers with me, and some of them are duplications, because some of the same kids in band are also in chorus, some of the same kids in orchestra are also in chorus. So you're asking about, I'd have to get you the numbers to see how many are duplicated numbers. I do have those numbers, but I don't have them with me.
Okay.
Mr. Schaefer, I just want, now when you did this whole thing, was this all done with the other two principals?
This was done with the entire administrative unit, and then as we got down to specifics on buildings, I met with the principals. But some of these deletions, as you see as we go further on, regard transportation, building and grounds, athletics.
So for, for the music, would that eliminate 1 FTE in 5th and 6th grade?
If you were to take all of what's being recommended here, I have to do some addition here.
That's 1?
1.02.
For all, all the-
A little bit of-
All the 3 through 6 stuff? If that's what you're saying, Scott?
Yeah, yeah.
It'd be a .81 FTE.
No, it's over 1. No, Scott's right, 1.2.
Yeah, I get it around .8.
.81.
1, 2, 3, 4, 5 lines?
Five lines.
Some of those are art.
Oh, okay, yep, 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 yep. Gotcha.
So what would you do? Take, take it off from the, what was teacher?
Or the part-time teachers.
And delete band and orchestra lessons in grade 4?
I was going to get to that next, but if you want to-
No?
Let's, let's finish up the other ones. So going back to the K through 2, grades 1 and 2, basically you're saying your recommendation is that's hard to actually get those savings, and that's important to probably keep it at that level. So you're really saying, your personal suggestion is to keep that the way it is?
At 1 and 2, yes.
Okay. Anybody disagree with that? Want to go with what Mr. Schaefer's recommending? Okay with that?
I disagree with it. I think there's more discussion needs to be done.
So you would like to, for grades 1 and 2, you would like to look at a reduction in grades 1 and 2?
You know what, Steve? I think there's more of a big picture that has to be looked at, because we haven't looked at hardly anything else.
Sure.
So I, no, I don't agree with that. I just, I just think that it's honed in on a small focus, and there's no details on, there's not one thing, oh, you've got money coming out of athletics.
Right, but-
I don't see the details of it.
But for grades 1 and 2, Mr. Schaefer's proposing to leave it the way it is right now? You're saying you'd like to see a change in grades 1 and 2? On music?
On the music?
Music and art.
I don't agree with that, at this point.
Okay. All right, so we'll, everybody else is looking like they're okay with leaving it the way it is right now, right? So I, so we'll-
Reduce in art?
We'll, we'll hold that one, we'll note that Barb has some concerns around keeping-
You're just staying for 1 and 2 or not to reduce?
We're not going to reduce it.
Correct.
Does she need to know that?
I don't think so.
No.
Keep saying, I was thinking, Barb.
So you're recommending not to reduce them?
Correct. Mr. Schaefer's recommendation is to leave it as is.
I agree.
You're okay with that?
All right. She brings up a good point, though, Steve. We're, we're not making decisions tonight.
We're just, we're trying to hone a few things in, that will, once we see a bigger picture of everything getting all that up, then we'll make some final decisions. But this is directionally where we think we might-
We know there's still some things out there, possibilities that aren't presented here.
Sure.
It's a little bit like making decisions in the vacuum.
Right.
It would be nice to see the whole menu of proposals to make decisions.
What we're trying to do is to reduce the number of variables. So if there are some that we think we can make a decision about, then we like, they're asking us to try and take some off the table right now, if we can, to help them focus in on some other things. It's more what we're trying to do. But yeah, I know what you're saying. You know, none of this is final, and we can revisit all of this, but if we can make some decisions about things like that one-
You know what, Steve? I think where I'm coming from is, is there's a lot of talk out in the community, and we're really talking about people's jobs. And, and to make something in concrete and say, oh yeah, I agree with this, I can't say I do until we do see the whole picture. That's what I'm-
Sure. That's fair. That's fair.
And nothing's in concrete tonight. It's, it's just discussions.
You know, you can say that, Mike, but if I go and agree, you know, yeah, let's have this maybe, you know, somebody's not going to sleep for a week and they'll probably be a rotten teacher.
The only thing we have to do, we have to start moving towards some decisions. Doesn't mean we have to make them all tonight, but we have to, at some point, we're going to have to make those decisions. So we have to be prepared to do that at some point. So the more we can make clear decisions now and get them out of the way, that helps them in their process for budgeting. So, okay, so back down, so what I, what I thought I heard, though, was everyone was okay with leaving 1 and 2 music the way it is, music and art. So that's an easy one, so we can tentatively leave that one alone.
Yes.
Because the other thing we want to do is we want to dial some of this in, into the totals, so before Lisa leaves us, so we can kind of see how this impacts what our total numbers look like, because there's a lot, a lot of variables again. Okay, so then back down to 3 through 6, music, art, and lessons. So we kind of, we talked a bit about that, that's all general music stuff. The one question I have is, would you be able, for this one, Mr. Schaefer, does the, do you feel comfortable you'd be able to get those savings? With a, with a realignment? With some kind of realignment of staffing?
Oh, I understand your question. Okay. So if, for instance, at 5th and 6th grade level, if we were to alternate, 5th grade have art one semester, music, the next semester 6th grade did the opposite, there would be five more classes that the art and music teacher at, for instance, Eden Elementary would be able to teach at GLP. There'd be a reduction of the part-time music and art teachers at GLP, for example. So, yes.
So you, so you see a path to that?
Yes.
Okay. One question as far as the students now, that what, they'll be doing this on a semester basis now, but should that help them with the way they, they take up the lessons and the way they handle all the, taking fewer classes at a time? Has there been any thought about that?
I'm not sure I understand.
Well, basically by semester, they're not going to be taking all these classes at the same time now. You're doing, you're putting them, music's going to be part of the year and art's part of the year, right?
Yes.
So they won't be having music and art in the same time of the year.
That's correct.
So they can be a little more focused on what they're doing.
I don't think that's as much a concern for an elementary school student who only has music or art once a week, but-
Okay, okay, that's fair.
You know, as opposed to the high schools semestrying-
Good, I knew that was some of the discussion for high school, yeah.
Yeah, I don't think that's as much a concern for elementary-
Okay, so no, no benefit on that, really? Okay. All right, so with this section, what are thoughts, what do you want to do on this one? Do you want to table this for further discussion? Any clear thoughts on this one?
I think we should table it.
Yeah.
We've got some questions, and we're not, we're not really coming to consensus.
All right.
That's not including the band orchestra part, right?
I think the whole section there, the whole section there. All right, so we'll, we'll leave that as a possibility.
Can we get an explanation on what the, the delete band orchestra lesson in grade 4 was? Because I don't think we got to that point.
That's right.
Some school, school districts have, as they've reached this budget juncture, particularly last year, were looking at not starting instrument lessons for band and orchestra until students were in 5th grade. So by putting off, beginning instrument lessons to 5th grade, there's that equivalent of FTE that can be saved.
Is that a, is that a, would that take a full-time teacher down to half-time, Mr. Schaefer?
Well, if it was a full-time teacher, it would take them down to .4.
So part-time?
But there are some part-time teachers there that would be affected first.
Really?
Yes.
Do we know how many schools have eliminated 4th grade band and orchestra?
No, we don't. But I can look into it if you like.
Just curious.
The question that I have, the teacher that I'm thinking of is, Mrs. Alman is part-time.
Yes.
And she's strings.
Yes.
And Mrs. Bayhan is full-time.
Yes.
And she's band. Would you, if you eliminated that, that part-time, would that mean one of those teachers would have to teach both instruments? That's what I, that's what I'm wondering. I don't know.
That is not as logistically appealing as, the certification certainly allows for it, because it's a K-12 certification. But the real, the reality of it is, that's not the way, that wouldn't be a, a good way to do it.
Would you explain to me how you would, you would master that, or?
It depends on what other ones you pick on the menu, of course, but there could be a couple possibilities. You eliminate the part-time music teacher at GLP. You begin to chip away at the part-time string teacher at Eden Elementary. And those would be the-
The two.
Probably the first two alternatives. And then you find the person who's lowest in seniority of the full-time music teachers.
We're going to be talking about some more music stuff later on then.
When we get to 7, 12.
Yep. So while we, while we table this one for now, we'll keep it on the list as a possibility, but we'll plan on revisiting it. Okay?
In grade 7 through 12, as you know, the high school librarian, Mr. Kibler, retired, and the plan was not to, our starting point with this budget was not to replace him.
So in the current numbers, there is no backfill for that position?
Correct.
Okay.
The plan would be to have the, a part-time librarian there. Currently, we have a, a part-time person at GLP who would pick up some of the time in the high school library as well.
That, right now, that's how we would do it?
Yes.
Okay.
And/or, depending on whether that person is full-time, or whether the high school schedule makes them full-time, or they remain part-time, the library can also be staffed by an aide for the purposes of signing and out books, et cetera.
Okay. So right now, the proposal to either go with adding a part-time librarian or adding a full-time aide, the cost is around 47,000?
Yes.
Okay.
So if, if we're adding someone who's already an employee, if we did the option of a part-time librarian coming from GLP, we wouldn't have double the healthcare cost?
Well, right now, they do not, or may not be eligible, or do not currently have health insurance.
Okay.
Full-time, they would-
But a .32 FTE would not be eligible for?
Well, if it was a new hire, these numbers would all be reduced.
Okay.
If you created a new part-time position. Mr. Schaefer, do you know what the, what the mandate is for a school, for a librarian? Do you have to have one? Do you have to have one?
One per district.
One per district.
Okay. And we don't have, after he leaves, we won't have a full-time. Is that correct?
No, we have...
We have one...
One point four or something.
One point four.
Okay.
Thoughts on this one?
How much is an aide?
For a full-time aide, he's saying it's about the same cost, $47,000. My recommendation right now is to not add this right now until we figure out some other things, because so far, we're real good at adding things and not so good at taking things away. We're kind of going backwards in the process. So I would say right now, that's, my suggestion is to not do anything with this until we see how we're doing some other things.
All right.
Is that okay?
I'm just wondering if we don't have a librarian at all at the high school, who manages that function?
I think we'd have to reallocate to other...
We'd have to reallocate the resources we have already.
Right now.
But that impacts on some of the things we talked about previously with art and music, because one of the things I mentioned was having library as one of the specials. So if you were to reduce the library and time at Eden Elementary, for example, and do those reductions in art and music, now you may not have enough to provide the contractual break of the teacher. So we have to be wary of all that. But...
Okay.
And Mr. Graff might want to get in the discussion here. This is on grades seven through 12. Combine, reduce, delete sections with enrollment of 12 or less. Also gonna pass around, this takes a look at classes by department that had enrollment of 12 or less this current academic year. And you might recall me saying at the last Board of Ed meeting, we talked about the budget. When we looked at these, there were over 60 classes first semester that had 12 or less, and there were over 60 classes second semester. You know, for example, if you were to look down into the business department, there were, there's a business analysis class that had nine students in it. There was a second section, do you see the parentheses after the course title, that had 12? There was another one a little further down that had 11, another one slightly further down that had 10 students in it. So we looked at classes like that that had 12 or less. I said 12 for no particular reason, but 12 or less, I have to say, if you look at the last page, there were also classes that had 13 to 18 kids in them in the class for enrollment. And first semester, there was 89 classes. That's in addition to the other 68 classes. And second semester, 90 classes that had 13 to 18 in them. So this is gonna be some of what Mr. Graff talks about. So using that as the basis of our starting point, what I just handed out is a little more detailed as far as what the reduction was for our classes. So if you guys could at least have a sense of what we're talking about. And it really was the combining of those sections based on the conversations that Mr. Schaefer had and the elimination of some of them to...
That's a class in A, B, C, D.
So, off of those things, yeah. Part of our conversation was, you know, if you're taking two sections and making them into one, in the scheduling world, and I know it says, no one says you form single classes that then cause constraints to those kids that want that class.
Schedule constraints, yeah.
Right. So the more, the more of that combining we do, the more constraint the overall schedule comes. So we just need to keep that in mind that if that's the way we're going. And I think we, you know, we've had those discussions. We need to have, we need to be there at this point. We need to have a realistic view of where we're at. Because we, I don't think we have taken that route as to even last year. So, but I think it is important to know that, that we will constrain some kids from getting the things that they want by making this decision, but that's probably just an actual consequence.
And these are electives, though, you're talking about, for the most part?
Mostly alive.
Yeah.
Mostly alive.
Okay, so it won't hurt anyone as far as getting required classes done.
The other thing that Mr. Schaefer and I talked about was the study hall. You have study halls covered by teachers now. We had the discussion, could we take that and assign those to the teacher?
Right.
We do have that going on right now in the building. So with the sections that I have listed here, could we make that swap?
Makes sense.
To...
Is that factored into what you put here or not yet?
I mean, no, we're not. But you'll see, for example, in the English department, we have teachers covering eight sections of study halls right now. So that's about three quarters of teaching, the equivalent of three quarters of a teaching position is covered in study halls.
Okay.
So I don't know if there's any specific questions about the courses that are listed. I did make a note on, Mr. Schaefer and I had this conversation today about in the music department, there's a course called Music in Our Lives. Sometimes we need it, sometimes we don't. That's the catch-all state mandated course. As you rightly, there's three students in there. Mr. Schaefer's comments, we tell you, can't we just force them into an art class? The requirement is for a fine arts class, and it can be either music, theater, dance, or art. So that's why that is listed there. Theater is also listed, and that fluctuates. I think we have years where there's almost 20, and we have years where it's six, seven, eight, nine.
Okay.
So that, you know, that's where they have reduction in music.
Quick question. I hate to stop you. The one that Mr. Schaefer handed out here, what is the, like it says, the first one, art, studio arts, 12 kids in the class. Then it's got 11 AC on first semester and 11 AC.
That's the period. The period in the semester, the first column is a first semester, and they're on a four-day rotation, A, B, C, D. This class meets 11th period, AC day.
Oh.
Right.
Okay.
And it meets second semester, it's a full-year course. It meets second semester, 11th period, AC day. Actually, the numbers you see there is a code that they do on the backside. Where you see 11, yeah, this is bottom of my row, 11 AC is actually fifth period. So...
Okay. Sorry.
So it's just the period that it means.
All right, sorry.
No, I saw.
So far, purposes, the schedule part doesn't really matter that much?
No.
Okay.
It's more so...
The number. All right. So what we have here is, Mr. Schaefer's presented this for all these classes with 12 or less. This is a summary of all of those classes. And what you've done is already taken some of that or a lot of that and said how you would...
How you would reduce that.
How you would reduce that. Could you take us then through your listing?
Sure. And the, yeah, based on current, we're using current numbers. We have a course launched after next year, so we're using the current numbers. We look at one less section of ceramics, one less section of ceramics too, one less section of creative crafts, one less section of studio and...
Could you, if we updated this, could you show us, you know, current sections and maybe proposed sections, something like that? Or is everything, because there's some of these classes, are they gonna be, you're saying, go to two, like sports marketing, you're saying go to two sections?
Go to two instead of three.
So should we just assume that everything here, we're plus one? If it's on the list, it's plus one right now?
Ceramics, ceramics one, for example, has three sections. So we'd be going to two.
Steve?
Ceramic one, you have one section.
Mr. Graff, I think where Steve is coming from is, we don't take school anymore, and it's really difficult for us to kind of understand if he gave us where we're coming from and where we're going.
I can, as far as you go, so currently, ceramics one...
Ceramics, you're gonna maintain two sections.
So you're reducing one?
So these are all reduced by?
This is reduced by.
Reduced by.
So that doesn't tell us, though, if it eliminates ceramics altogether. I mean, you just tell us, but...
The only things that would be eliminated completely would be the theater and the music in our lives.
Yeah, so if we could, I think it'd be helpful to update just the table, right?
And web design.
Current proposed.
And web design or business, those would be only eliminated courses. Everything else would be still offered, but just by less than the number of sections it's listed.
And theoretically, the numbers in the remaining sections would go up, the enrollment numbers.
Theoretically, unless a student ran into scheduling problems.
Why would you have AIS English in...
Well, right now, we have art teacher that is dual-certified, but by reducing some of the things in English, those AIS classes could now go away. But that is actually part of it.
Are AIS classes?
Right. But it is part of the teachers' schedule.
I have a question. When I was in high school, teams like all these classes, like the classes that were packed with kids, and now I'm seeing, well, what is it like for art, ceramic? That was a packed class.
It's hard to say. I don't know. I mean, it's just the choices the kids are...
It's a schedule.
Part of it's scheduling. Part of it is interest of the kids.
Is scheduled?
Part of it is whether they like the teacher, whether they don't like it.
Sure.
That definitely plays into it.
What's different in the schedule from when Michael was there?
I would...
Semesters. Everything's all year long now?
Yeah.
Now, also with these classes, or does it, can we get something like, like the amount of money we put into, like, updating these classes? Because I would hate to see one leave that we just spent all this money on updating really.
Like we just spent 20 grand on a new kiln?
Yeah. And I'm just saying, goodbye to ceramics.
Well, the only classes that would be not offered, web design, music in our lives, and theater. All the other classes are just going from three sections to two or four sections to three, still offered.
In the appropriation status report, we have everything broken down, well, for budget for next year by department. This year, we didn't break it down as much by department.
Some of the more basic things that they have, have not filtered out much yet. We have seventh and eighth graders here. Eighth grade will be going into ninth. We're still running six sections of those things, which come out of buying. Right. We send five sections to the high school, and they're put into six sections. Right. So, you know, we just need to get in line. It just needs to get in line.
Can you factor that in for the next round of looking at this?
It's actually in there. So if you look at English, it says one, five sections of English, seven, and English, English is reduction to sections.
Okay.
And the same thing with, like, science.
And with math.
Math. And we're doing it in social studies. We have five sections in social studies because those teachers are teaching global sections here. They didn't have, we're doing it in social studies.
Okay.
I can't remember, though, for our seventh and eighth graders, what our score or our scores have declined, but yet our class sizes were small. So now we want to increase.
Smaller than average.
Okay. Because I have to think about this. Can I ask two things? One, can we get this in table format, one that shows current number of sections, and the second column would show proposed number of sections, so we can see the, a little bigger picture of the thing. The other thing I would ask, and see what everyone else thinks, is can you go through the list of all the other electives that you offer, and if there's other recommendations for things that would be opportunities to take out, is take electives out? Now, I wouldn't think we'd want to take out, one of our goals is to keep college credit courses, so I wouldn't think we'd want to touch any of those. But any other electives that you think maybe aren't the most valuable things, given the fiscal environment we're in?
What electives are mandated? Are any electives mandated by the state and federal?
Depends on the subject there. English, for example, senior-level courses, literature and maybe, there's different options, but they're mandated, but they do get the choice of those.
Right. Okay.
I mean, we could do things, things that we've kicked around the last couple of years. We could go to the capital, English, lit 12, it looks like 12.
Cover it that way.
Eliminate some of those options, but it does, would allow to maybe reduce.
Okay.
Mrs. Henry had asked at the last board meeting for the college-level courses, the New Steps, the APs, ECC, Hilbert, and we included the enrollment with those. Because that was a board goal, we didn't, we didn't impact upon those in this projection of reductions.
I do have a question about that. Mr. Graff, any of these on here, were any of these AP courses, any of those that you gave us?
No. No.
Okay. And Mr. Schaefer, I do have a couple of questions. Can you just explain New Step to me, what it means?
They're run through Niagara University, our teachers.
Oh, Niagara University, okay.
Yes.
Okay. And...
So what they do is they get college credits at Niagara for completing that. I believe you pay a small fee, but they get...
Right.
Is there a way of signing out what our current faculty would be asking, what they would be qualified to teach at the college level, so that we would have more of the pick and choose? In other words, if we had an elementary teacher that was qualified to teach accounting law, for example, if we do that, then...
Right.
Is there a way of, I don't know if that's an easy thing to do.
It would depend, it really would depend on the college person. It's a couple of little topics, because they allow their positions. So it's a little more stringent, but, you know, we had some ideas on what we want to offer. We can definitely reach out to, you know, our two biggest ones are the New Step program and either ECC is.
I don't know what they have, and I don't know what we're qualified to teach, so it'd be nice to know where the intersections are.
Are you...
I can, I can have to get you a list of what is available and that, is that any of the interest or...
Of college credit.
I can get you a full listing of the New Step courses.
New Step or ECC, is there anybody else? Is there anyone else that offers these type programs?
Just one.
Oh, okay. It'd be interesting to see. I'm just curious.
Know what to choose from.
Yeah, I'd just be curious, yeah. Yeah, it'd be great if you do that.
And if there's any interest, then we would have to...
And are there any that you're looking at for next year that aren't on this list?
The ones that we were thinking about, and were the...
Statistics?
AP stats and AP psychology.
And why didn't we look at those, just for curiosity?
Interest of the teachers.
Okay, interest of the teachers or interest of the students?
Yeah, also the teachers.
But those are AP, they're not college credit?
They become college credit in some places.
But what we went through, yeah, that's the problem. We went through in the goal-setting session, you were telling us that the AP stuff was not as transferable, if you will, as the, say, New Step stuff.
The New Step and ECC stuff, they're really giving that college transfer. So children who have communities in there gets accepted.
Yeah.
AP, everybody, you know, my experience is that colleges and universities all interpret that a little bit differently.
Yeah, because our goal was to add more New Step programs, not so many AP programs. It was around clear college credits.
Psychology, we could not get at Niagara, we could not do part of it.
Okay.
All right.
All right. Yeah, we get to see the list.
Steve, I know I'm not supposed to talk, but I got a question.
Yeah, no, no, no.
They had not been compliant with the scheduling for years. We're trying out programs, we have to fix the scheduling first before we can go on.
Stop, please.
Okay. I'll get it out.
Okay. All right, that helps. So if we can, so two next steps would be, one is to give the list a slightly different version of what you currently have and proposed sections, and then also a list of other electives that you think would maybe not be the best place to spend our money right now.
Steve, I was just gonna ask you about the cost. Do the parents, do the parents donate to any of this?
If you want New Step credit, then you have to pay an additional fee for the New Step credit. If you want to take an AP class, then you have to, there's a fee, and you have to take a test, which depending on how well you do on the test... It's about $90,000. New Step courses, around $200,000 to $300,000.
And I do have a couple of questions about, do you know if any of the students have used them, have they been beneficial to the students? Do you know if students have gone on and used these from, how many of our students graduate and go to Niagara University?
Well, if you go ahead and go to Niagara, they're transferable, so without a college program.
So Niagara, if they get this New Step, then they can go anywhere and use it? Because I've heard that some places don't accept.
That's AP, AP's a little harder sometimes.
AP's questionable.
It really depends on...
The institution.
Any transfer credits anywhere.
Yeah, they're always suspected.
Really is at the discretion of the college.
But the New Step, you can go to...
But the basic, the basic courses that we're offering, to be honest with you... But the basic, the basic courses that we're offering, to be honest with you.
The interrupter. Because of college interrupter, easier to transfer, yeah.
And I have to say, Mrs. Henry, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Graff, that one of the advantages of taking this, these classes, it, the state talks about rigor. These classes let a student know if they're ready for the rigor of college. These are difficult, challenging, lots of work to be done outside the class kind of. So they, I think they are, just by virtue of that, very beneficial to our students.
So if we add up, so this is your summary list right now, where, what you think would be the reductions for that. Do you have a total of what that's worth?
We added together.
Yes, no, they're love.
Everything's listed, starting with reduce college.
30, 50, 70, on 50, on 80, on 90, about 210, 220. All right, so that's a, we'll look at this a little more, we got a feel for it. Anybody have some more questions or thoughts about this section?
Just under grade seven through 12, there's just a note here that says may require the addition of an A to do study halls. Is that because the first night teachers aren't doing study halls, and if you eliminate those? But that's not, that add is not put into this?
Yeah, we don't know FTE, we don't know anything.
Well, you've already factored in this scenario as though, using Aids for study halls?
No.
You have not?
No.
So that would be an additional savings?
Additional cost.
Additional cost, potentially.
They eliminated the sections, but they didn't?
I eliminated the section.
Okay.
The decision would not have to be, do we add?
How do you step?
Do we add like an A to do study halls? Or do we just leave it as this, and then that would adjust those because for reduction? We kept the teachers in those positions. I reduce schedules by the sections of study halls.
Okay. Oh, okay. So if we want to keep those study halls, we'll have to add maximum cost?
Sure.
All right, I got it.
So it's just a matter of whether the teachers will be doing those as they currently are. They got, we have a whole going on, we have a two trace that does some.
Right.
We're doing teachers in those. So it's really just a matter of cost.
Okay. All right. Let's see, so additional costs.
Next, under seven, 12 is, and this is just listed there, extra class transcends to the elementary school as well, but reduce extra class overall by 20%.
That's, now, how would you group up that set of clubs? That's all extra classes? No, can't be.
Including the musicals, advisors.
That's across.
And again, that was just, just a straight 20% reduction off the teachers' whole.
There was a book, there's a bunch of them.
It's already a point that we have kicked around.
Are there some clubs with fewer than 10 students participate?
Oh.
And most of the cost of these clubs are teachers or people running the clubs? Okay.
So in that number, we would have, I'm looking at this budget book here. If you looked at 100% of that number, you would have the 21,000 for the high school musical, the 10,000 for the elementary musical, 102,000 for all the clubs.
Yeah, I use 13, 14 stipend amounts.
Okay, so it's a little bigger, but I'm just trying to see how, so, because you're talking, where's the number?
Steve, I have a couple of questions. One is, Mr. Graff, are some of these?
Okay, that makes sense.
Do some of these groups have fundraisers that they support themselves?
Well, they support their activities.
What do you mean by that?
The figures that you see really cover the buy-in itself.
And benefits.
Okay.
So any, any of the activities that we're doing generally?
And that adds up. So that times five is like 110. So it's really that, it is that close.
I, I did a little bit of math.
Close place.
Over the, over the weekend, and I came up with, I know, the musical gets mentioned all the time. And I went through some of the sports, because the sports and the math were together. And I picked it apart by how much per student it costs. And I'm not going to say anything to threaten any of these, I'm not, I'm just bringing up some facts. Diversity wrestling costs $15,710. That's $561 per student. There's 28 kids that are in wrestling. Boys varsity lacrosse, varsity, $9,780. There's 25 students that attend that. It's $465 per student. Boys varsity basketball, $3,623.91, 25 students, $144.95. Boys volleyball, we spent $9,611, 12 students, we're paying $873 per student. Girls volleyball, we spent $13,125. There's 10 girls on the team. We spent $1,300 per student on the girls volleyball. Varsity football, $11,733. Each one of those football players, we support them with $558. Bowling, I don't know if it's boys and girls, $8,791, there's 14 kids, $627.96. The high school musical has 125 kids in it that we affect. It's $20,821. It affects 125 students. The cost for our school is $166. It's the least amount of cost. It brings in a profit. None of the sports bring a profit in. It brings the community to the school. And it's truly entertainment. We've had some great musicals. These are just facts. So before the musical gets, and I'm not here, you know, there's some things that I know that we can change. But I was astonished to see that the musical affects so many kids. And it's the li, least amount of cost. No, it's not a sport. I'm not comparing apples to apples. It's not fair in this situation. But I was really shocked to see that. And some of the sports, we might want to take a look at, and. The total cost of sports is 405,000. And on the average, with the varsity, the JV, and the modified, it's $417 per student. Just state facts.
Okay. So back to the reduce clubs by 20%. Thoughts, any additional thoughts about that?
So the idea would be that the students would then do fundraising to make up the difference?
Well, that's, that's Mr. Graff. Caught you not paying attention.
We have a, we have a separate.
Caught you.
So the, the reduction of 20% of extra class, that would, that would be put upon the students to do, was the thought that the students would then do fundraising to make it?
Or, or things, there are positions that we do not fund from year to year. Yeah, I, I can't even speak to how those are chosen.
I don't know either.
The, the list comes out every year for extra classroom activities. And some are asked out that we're not funding this year, so I, I don't know.
Yeah, you would have to tell me what's not being funded.
All right. So what you're saying is, there's an opportunity to make some reductions in there. If we want to go that way, we need to figure it out.
We just use that as a start, to be honest with you. What, what would be a legitimate number that we could potentially reduce by? That was, it really hasn't been a good, good, really bad.
Okay.
But I think Mr. Campbell was saying, I'm going to interpret what you were saying as, devise a strategy, and one of the factors in that strategy can be the participation in the club.
Right, just like some of these classes we look at. Look at how many kids are in each one of these clubs. If there's three or four kids, those would be the ones that we would take a hard look at.
So what you're asking is, for our next meeting to come back with an approach on how you would get the 20%.
Well, at least a list of the clubs and how many participants are in it.
Well, they're showing numbers in the project book here.
Yeah, and here you'll see a lot of that stuff. Okay.
We can, we can draft that for the next time.
But, yeah, okay.
Did you write that down on the list of things to do, Mr. Graff? All right, good.
Okay. All right.
Mrs. Johnson is probably going to talk about the need for the additions of some part-times in special education for math, reading, and at GLP. Yes, you have to tell us why we're adding.
Well, it's getting intertwined with like the .18 specialized math.
Sean, can you come up here and, yeah, I'm sorry. Here you go.
The .18 FTE, what it is, is that currently I have one period taught by a math teacher at the high school who's dual certified because I have a self-contained special ed program. So she's just teaching at one period, and the rest of the day, she's AIS. Well, our, Mr. Boggs, prior to him leaving, and putting his whole heart, Grant, and I, is that he wants that person to be all AIS. So I would lose that .18 to teach my now, to free them, to do next year. So it's not like I'm asking, it's just, it's taken away, but I got to replenish it.
Oh, yeah. So we haven't taken away?
No. If, if you take that period and put it into AIS math, which is suggested when we started the budget process, to Mr. Graff and myself, then I need somebody to teach that math period.
Okay.
We put that teacher, we have to have two certified in the high school, and she's doing her high special ed. And I need that self-contained, nine students that have to have that done right, that's what they need, and that's how I'm going to get through to get through to this. If you want to put all that in AIS, then I would need that person. If you don't, then come on, and you just take it out of there.
So we actually, I think we need to move this to an add over in the math department. This is what it really is, right?
Would be an add into the math?
No, actually, it would be special ed, because it's on this child's IP, that's where we would budget it.
Right, but we're actually, you're staying even on supporting this level of special ed math. What you're trying to do is add more people into math AIS. So it's a additional cost over math, in the math department.
That was said, no, I don't know.
Isn't it? Am I following it? No? I'm going to go crazy.
If you need that, it's for AIS math.
We won't know. We won't know until we get it done.
So it's just put out there, it makes sense enough, I, it's just that if they go AIS, I really need somebody to teach that.
If the need.
If you decide you need someone over in math AIS. It's a cost addition to math, is what it is.
Yeah.
This is staying nu, you're staying neutral.
Yep.
Right, am I following it?
This was our first year just going.
Yeah, but you're cost, you're cost neutral. You're not looking for any additional cost here, you're just wanting to maintain what you have.
Which is offset by tuition student in that classroom.
And actually, it wasn't budgeted in specialized this year, because I just recently found out about it, so it's just in the math department.
Yeah, I know there's some accounting stuff on how it works in the background, but really what we're talking about is adding some additional AIS in math. If you add that, then we have to backfill this.
Right. Point five to in specialized, point five to the AIS, because I needed that reading certified person up here.
Okay.
So it's another situation, again, if he needs to take my reading person up here back with that, back over there, then I need the reading specials here. That then falls into the .5 teacher at GLP, and I'm totally confused. Because if I can get my full person, Mr. Schaefer, then I don't need that .5 without what part-time at GLP, part-time at elementary.
But that would only, but that would only be if the read, for reading at the elementary school dropped.
Right, and we don't know that either until August.
Okay, so, so the second one's the same as the first. It's just a, it's a backfill, so the question is, do we need to add elementary, was it, RTI?
AIS.
Yes. That's right. So, again, that should, we, for budget purposes, we should have that over in that section, if we want to consider that, I think.
Yeah, it's not really a specialized add.
No, neither one over. Yours stay instead, you're not asking for any additional people at all.
Oh, I like what I have.
But to keep what you have, so, these need to be, if we, if we, do you follow them going? These need to be put into the sections on where they're really, where the cost is really being at.
I'm just going to add the cost to specialized, because they are for specialized students. I see what you mean, but.
Yeah, well, for, you, you can have the accounting code battle with whoever you want. But the, but let's put the cost where the service is going to be provided.
So you'd like to see that, for instance, .5 specialized teacher at GLP, put up under the GLP?
Well, what it really is, it's, no, it's, it's really a .5.
A .5 AIS teacher.
AIS teacher at the elementary.
Not a .5 specialized teacher.
Well, you're trying to sneak an extra resource over New Year's, I give her the bill. That's what it looks like.
Long overdue.
So, yeah, if we could regroup those under the, where the, where the choice comes, do we add the, where the real decision is coming to? These aren't, these are requirements, and these are things you already are doing, so there's no change here, so I don't think this is the discussion. Discussion is, are we going to have to do something that's going to cause trouble on her?
Because I can make it work with that .5 teacher. That was an additional when we first started this whole process.
Which one?
That was an addition, because we are out of compliance right now at GLP. I warned you on that. But I think we can do it if we keep everything as, and I can get my other .5 back if he gets a AIS.
Okay, and I'm not sure I'll follow the GLP one, after I know I'm not.
Right now, I have one specialized teacher that services, but if you've got to take out my self-contained, is that separate? I have one teacher servicing 24 specialized kids right now. So some of our, we are out of compliance from the research room, then I have to go through state ed now for variance.
All right.
And then we have probably six or seven referrals just coming in. If I had that .5 person right now, I'd do a chair, try to get variance, see if we can get it through.
So that is, that is an add that you want to have. The GLP one is a true new.
It would, it would be nice, but why don't you keep it in there for now? And then if you have to cut, then we have to figure out.
All right, so, so the last one stays here, is something you'd like to add?
Yeah.
Okay, makes sense to me. All right, so we can leave that there for now. Anybody else have questions? Everybody follow that?
No, I didn't follow it.
All right, well, we'll recast the first two into the right functional areas.
And, and Steve, I guess I'm sure.
This is on your computer, and I said, and Gracie will have access to it.
So $56,000, that might impact everything off a little bit, because all my grant money is down.
Which grant money you're talking about, the squester money?
Suction, 611 and 619.
Which is the money being impeded by the squatters that we're talking about?
Correct.
Okay. Yeah, that's, that's all different from Ballgate.
It's not suffice, no money is.
No, no, there's, most of our budget is not that. Okay, thank you.
Under athletics, we talked before about eliminating the 5 o'clock bus run. It's an estimated savings of $20,000. It varies in ridership from as few as five, as many as 20. It's two buses that cover the entire district at 5 o'clock.
I would. Do they still have a detention bus?
That's a 4 o'clock bus, two days a week.
Is that detention bus?
But it's, it's not just for detention, it's for after-school activities, clubs, tutoring.
Wasn't there two runs before? Like a 3 o'clock, or?
The elementary has a 3 o'clock run that sometimes high schoolers do ride home on. And then we have a 4 o'clock run for math, Olympia, and other activities that high schoolers also ride on from their activities, and then the 5 o'clock sports run.
So is there, what's the 4 o'clock run cost us? Any idea?
I don't have that priced out.
Mr. Schaefer, that's just Tuesdays and Thursdays, isn't it?
Just Tuesdays and Thursdays.
Always at the 4 o'clock, it's just Tuesdays, Thursdays?
And then the 5 o'clock one, was that every day or?
Yes.
That was every day?
Yes. And if there was a time between seasons, for instance, like now, basketball has ended and softball, baseball has not started yet.
So you don't need it.
Spring sports have not started yet, we don't need it. But that'll only be a lull of a week or two.
Could we, could we get an estimate with the 4 p.m. one cost us?
Sure.
Just the ballpark. Anybody have any concerns with eliminating the 5 o'clock run?
Well, they said 5 to 20 kids, so is it 20 kids when sports are full year, and then 5 when they're not, I guess?
I don't know the answer to what determines the ridership.
It's in the fall mostly, right? The big numbers in the fall?
Big number was in the fall, but it really varied. It was, you could have 20 kids on Monday and be down to two kids on Tuesday. The average number, we averaged it out for the entire year, and the highest number was, the average was 20. I think the fall, I think we got up to about 28, but that was it.
One, one big day.
28 per bus, 28.
No, 28 combined.
Because there's the two buses.
So you could literally send one bus out with one kid and the other bus out with maybe nine. And that seemed to be especially in the winter, but it really varied throughout the whole year.
I guess my concern is that cars, the kids' cars will just be packed up with kids, but I guess if there's only five.
It's probably happening now.
Yeah.
We've got to get some savings somewhere, I think that's one we should put out there. Anybody have concerns with doing that?
I'm okay with that one.
All right, let's put that one as a tentative to roll into the numbers.
If there were some kids that were stuck here, let's say after sports, and had to wait for a parent to come home from work in the city, would they be able to stay in the building and wait for a parent to pick them up? Could we have some provision like that?
I believe they typically do.
But if you're asking, is there specifically supervision for them, the answer's no.
Yes, there is. The coach has to stay with them until all kids are picked up. No kid left behind. So the coach will stay there. We've had coaches wait two hours. Our coach, my coaches, will not leave until every kid is gone. And if it happens to be a local pickup, like GLP, when there's three teams practicing, say Mr. Bernardoni, Mr. Novak, and another coach, they'll make an arrangement where one coach will stay today, another coach will stay the next week, no child is ever left unattended.
That's good, thank you. What do we got next, Eric?
The section has not had any movement as far as I know. Ms. Falcaro can correct this if it's incorrect. On the, going to the modified A program of a 7, 8, 9, 7th, 8th, 9th graders playing on a modified A and 10th, 11th, 12th graders.
You don't want to be up here.
Playing, has there been any change in that, Ms. Falcaro?
Our next meeting is scheduled for Monday, but none of my ECIC counterparts are looking at cutting modified and going to the, or cutting JV and going to the 79 program.
So this is highly unlikely, is what you're saying?
It is highly unlikely, especially, our biggest hope was to use teams in our division, Tana Wanda, Holland, JFK, and they, nobody's looking at it right now.
Okay, so we should, if it's highly unlikely.
It's a moot point this year, you might as well wipe it off.
Take off, Liz.
I'm surprised, what, what do you think?
Everybody's budget seems to be status quo, and I don't understand why it's so different. But last year was a big topic of conversation, and it looked like it was going to go, and this year, I know Cleveland Hill, for instance, is adding it to the modified sports. So I'm not quite sure what exactly is going on, but.
What's going on is we're behind the cycle. Everyone else did their reductions in previous years, and our budget was padded for a number of years, so that's why it's happening to us now. That's, that's the reason.
Can you explain that again, Steve? What happened? We were behind the?
Our budget was padded for a number of years. In fact, last year, the reason there weren't any reductions here was we just basically took the padding out of the budget. So we don't longer have any padding in our budget, so we're now having to make some reductions that everyone else has had to do over the last, you've heard it all over the paper for the last two to three years, all this reductions and layoffs and everything, and all the other schools done, we haven't done any of that.
Didn't she just say that they're adding some modified?
Well, depending on what their state aid came back, if they've already taken enough cost out of their, their system, if they've already reduced enough costs, then they can afford to do some of those things, depending on what their state aid looked like, I would believe that's probably.
Like Holland, for instance, they cut two modified sports, I believe, last year, their padding goes back in. East Aurora funded one, Booster funded one, they're adding that back in, Cleveland Hill is adding. But I understand what you're saying, they don't, they're cutting with teachers and different classrooms throughout the year.
And their sports and everything else?
Um, most of it.
Okay, well, they did some, some schools did some.
Little bit, and most of it is stuff that we've already done. I know Mrs. Henry pointed out, our areas of expense. But just to point out, if you look at the expenses of sports, just to sidebar on this, the varsity sports are so high because supplies in other, supplies is 13,000, other is 16,000. I don't, I only buy for the varsities, and it trickles down to JV modified. So it may look like modified is only to, but the bulk of it is varsity. The reason volleyball, girls volleyball, for instance, is one of the highest, is because I have to pay $4,000 for us because we're so darn good to go to states every year. I have to pay for the bus, I have to pay for the hotel.
You mean, you mean Eden has to pay?
Eden has to pay. Not me personally, but it's coming out of my budget, which, you know, I, you know, I'm feeling attacked right now. 971 kids, 971 kids, $400 a kid. I honestly don't think that's too much.
Well, some of those kids are repeats, too.
They are repeats, but I'll go back to how many kids I have in college playing sports right now. How many kids last year, top 10 of the graduating class, seven of them were the top 10 and were athletes. Six of them this year are athletes. We are scholar athletes every year, and it's because of, I'm off topic.
Yeah, it's okay, Alex, let's.
That's all right. Hey, you know, and I'm not really, again, these are just facts. It's right in the book that was given, these are, these are facts, I'm not.
It is, I just don't think we can compare them. I would never, ever try to attack another program and say my program's important and nothing other, but it happens a lot here.
All, let's, we'll leave it at that. All the programs are important to someone, so.
I guess that's kind of common.
Before, before that, okay.
Yeah, so I would take the modified A off of that.
That's gone on. Okay.
It doesn't look like this year, but it changes Monday, I'll let you know.
Actually, we don't have even, we don't have a number on here, so.
No.
So that's already, it's effectively off, so we can take it off the list, okay. All right, and then modified sports is total cost of 48,000, that's in next year's numbers?
Yes, that's with, with lacrosse. That was with lacrosse.
Lacrosse still paying their way.
Currently funded.
Right.
That was for modified, that includes cycling benefits, officials, supplies, other, and transportation. And that was roughly about 204 athletes.
Okay. And the problem, you said officials are, I think you told me once, officials cost us a lot of money.
The officials, the contract is being negotiated, ADs are trying to put their foot down with the officials, we're not happy with it, we don't want them to get a raise, since everybody else is making cuts, we feel that they should be cut. So I actually, in the officials, I did give them a raise just in case, but we are hoping that if they don't get a contract, that it will go back to the current year, so there would be a little.
How much, how much was that raise?
I gave them $200 because that's what they got.
No, but how much was the total, if you add that all up across everything for your budget for associating increase?
I don't know, I want to check my association.
Oh, okay.
Just get my little state meeting and then our.
Well, no, I was just wondering.
How many events are they associating?
Factor that in.
And multiply, they have times the 2,000.
Yeah, I would just multiply by two. It would be the same.
Okay, so it's not even in there?
It would be my officials cost for this year, which I have over there.
Okay, so, well, again, that additional cost, if they do go up, is not even in here yet?
No. If they went up, yes, this is in here, if they don't go up and I can get them to stay still, I budgeted that they were going to get that raise, because I didn't want to be lower.
Is there?
So I have, if we stayed with next year's budget, or this year's budget, it would be maybe about 2,000.
Okay, that's what I was trying to feel about how big it is.
Maybe about 1,000, I would say.
Okay, so it's not, it's not huge either way?
No, it's not huge in the front row.
I don't know. Okay.
And you also said you were trying to work with them to get one official rather than two and three.
We also, yes, most of our, we go with the bare minimum that you did. Some of our modified sports were allowed, softball, you, the state says you can have one or two officials. We go with one. But there's some officials, like lacrosse for modified, they still say you have to have two, we're trying to say, no, it's modified, if we have one, I was out here, so we're trying to fight for that, too, even at the JV level. I also did, Mrs. Henry, about bowling, our bowling is extremely expensive, I'm looking at changing alleys to try to find somewhere cheaper, because I think it's outrageous.
Is it boys and girls?
It is boys and girls, but it's still, unfortunately, that is a very limited amount of practice time for us, where I know other school districts are doing some investigation, they go every day for much cheaper than we do.
It was, it was random, I just went through the random.
No, it's a great question, because honestly, that is a huge amount when my kids are practicing every day. If my kids were going to the alleys every day, I would say, yes, that's a great figure, but they're not, and I don't like, unfortunately, what even alleys is charging us, so I am working elsewhere.
Good. Okay. Next one on the list is modified, so the question is, what do we think about modified sports? Is this something we want to take a look at, take a portion of that away, ask our boosters to support it more? What are some of the thoughts there? That's the full 48,000, Marissa, 48,000 for all modified, right?
48,000 for all modified except for the lacrosse program.
Except for the lacrosse that's paid for already. Thoughts about that?
I guess I'd like to see our participation first for.
We have, it's in your packet.
It's in the book.
It's in your packet. The modified is 204 athletes without, without lacrosse. And most of our numbers, for numbers, we try to take the highest number, let's say softball, you know, we try to take about 20, which gives you a big match, but we figure the more kids active, the better. Field hockey, you know, their numbers will help to share in the fall, but we still have about 13 kids out there, all 13 are playing, and we go with that.
I know you're probably not prepared to answer this question, but I'll ask it anyways, sorry.
Okay.
If, if we had to do something like, take half the cost of modified away, I'll let you go think about that one, I want to ask you.
I've thought about it, and I've tried to bring it up with the boosters, and I know it's something you might have to do, and it will be, I don't know how we can do it. We struggle raising the $9,000 for lacrosse. I know we raised a lot of money in the Corn Fest, but having $13,000 for supplies, I can't buy uniforms for my teams. I basically buy balls and scorebooks and stuff. So most of my coaches fundraise for their own uniforms, the kids buy their own uniforms, the coaches buy their own equipment, football bought a new sled, pushing thing out.
Pushing thing.
Out there, what they use, my lacrosse program, because it's growing, they buy their own goals, field hockey bought their own goals. I can't afford that stuff, and my coaches are very good about it, so they fundraise for it. So I've been thinking about that, I'll break, and I don't know how I would come up with that money. I've still tried to direct my mind, and I can think about it longer, but it would be tough.
So your first option would be to fundraise, the second option would be to pick and choose?
I would hate to have to pick and choose.
I know, it's.
I don't want to be the one that picks and chooses, but.
Yeah, I know, I know.
Yes, I would need to know what you'd be willing to put towards modified, I guess, and then go from there. And I would need the dollar amount, and then meet with my coaches and sit down with them. But if you gave me an exact dollar amount, that would help.
Marissa, the JV, the modified, and the varsity, are they all kind of different age groups?
They are. The modified is your 7th and 8th grader, a 7th and 8th grader can't go up and play a JV or varsity sport unless they pass the physical fitness testing. What it would be is if you think of the fitness test that the PE teachers give the kids, you have to do so many sit-ups in a minute, so many pull-ups in a minute. New York State says that it determines that a 7th grader is tough enough and strong enough to handle competing with a 9th, 10th, 11th.
Now, what if, Steve, what's our, what's our mandate for phys ed? What can we have to do for phys ed?
And that's our next thing, Mr. Schaefer has put it on the list, and I was asked to look into it. I did contact a number of people, I contacted New York State, the Commissioners Reg State in a section that you can use a varsity sport, varsity only for 10th, 11th, and 12th.
10th, 11th.
Only if the entire curriculum for PE is met. We cannot meet the entire curriculum for PE by 10th grade, 11th grade, and especially 12th grade because of our schedule this year. If our schedule was maybe different, I could see meeting it for a 12th grader, possibly. There is no school in New York State doing this. I found two schools close to New York City that used to do this, however, when the new APPR and Common Core were putting, they said there was no way they could do it.
Are we fulfilling our mandate right now?
For PE, no, we are not.
So what would be a difference if we didn't fulfill it anyhow?
I don't think, because I don't think two wrongs make a right. I mean, I really don't. We've been lucky up to now.
Well, what I'm, what I'm getting at is, is what if, what if the school day was a little bit longer?
I'm for that.
And the sports were included, and that's where I would try to.
But New York State says we can't unless we need the PE curriculum. And then the state has to sign off on it.
The state has to approve you doing that?
The state has to approve, and the Commissioners Reg State, Mr. Schaefer has, the Commissioners Reg State, that it needs to be approved by the Commissioner of Education, and you have to show documentation, however, piece of the PE curriculum has been met. And when you have PE classes, thank you, when you have PE classes where it's 9th, 10th, 11th, and 12th together, it's very hard to teach in sequential order. And now with the new APPR, there's, who's accountable for those students? And then it also states that you have to, once that athlete is done, say swimming, swimming's over November 1st, they have to be put back into a PE class right away. So now you have 200 and some athletes, how are you going to stick them back in? I contacted New York State Gov, I contacted Daryl Daley at New York State Education Department, he's in, he's in charge of PE. I contacted Todd Nelson at NISPO, that's our New York State Sport and Athletic PE. And then I contacted Ariel Lambozies, and they all sent me a million different things on why this is not appropriate or allowed, and schools aren't doing it. It's, if you looked at the PE education curriculum, you would kind of get a little bit more feeling for it. Like I said, the two schools that were doing it, as soon as the new APPR, Common Core, everything, they stopped, they said, right on their website, we're sorry, but there is no way that we can hold a teacher accountable for a student they don't see. So I did, I.
And does curriculum go into health?
PE curriculum, no, there's the two separate, because a lot of the PE curriculum has to do with movement and then skills, the knowledge base, I mean, you really have to be in a PE setting to get it. I mean, there's, there's.
That's a good analogy, yeah, that's going all that, no, we get the point. So what you're saying is you don't see any feasible way to do that either right now?
I don't, especially with the two, like I said, the two I talked to said it's basically impossible. And then, like you said, you're going to have me finding classrooms to put these kids and these athletes in after. And what do you do for, you know, bowling's a lifetime skill, but right now, because of budget, my scorebooks are only meaning 12 times. times. Um, how is that a PE class? And what, what, they're not, they're meeting one area. They're not meeting ten of the other ones that I have.
Okay. How, so do we pursue that one far enough?
Hey, I think it's a dead issue at the moment.
I, I really think it is. I mean, maybe eventually, maybe once your schedule changes, you can relook at it. Maybe if the state changes the ride with.
Oh, yeah, that, that works.
Common Core and everything and it's something, uh, we retired.
Yeah.
I don't know.
Understate, yeah. Okay. Um, JV sports, varsity sports, they pretty much speak for themselves. So that's the total cost for each of those. And then in your budget books for everybody who hasn't looked at these yet or had a chance, in there you'll see the cost for each sport, number of participants, all that kind of stuff.
Twenty-one, twenty-two.
Did you want to leave those on the list or did you want to table that? Or did you want to just take them off for now?
Well, I don't know. I.
Delete them all.
I, um, deleting varsity and JV sports sounds like a big move. I'm not, I'm not sure. I'm, I'm not comfortable with that. Um, does anybody here see us going in that direction of limiting?
No, no, no.
Varsity, JV. So I think those two come off. I think parts of modified should still.
I think they can be looked at though. You know, you're not, you're doing blank, just eliminate it or keep it. You're not even looking into the detail of it. It's got to be looked at.
It's not a no or nothing thing, I think, is what Marissa was trying to say. I think Marissa's been looking at some, some ways to save some funds. So it's an open issue as far as I think.
Yeah. So we'll see if you can find some more things in there. But, um, those programs in general, I think we, we keep for now. Modified, we keep on the table to figure out if we can afford it or how it's going to work or anything else. Scoreboard, you want to talk about that while you're here?
Sure. Um, our football scoreboard had died. Um, it was from nineteen eighty-four, I believe that it was, uh, I brought in. There is one local company that takes care of basically all of Western New York in Rochester, Pennsylvania. It's a Toast, uh, Dectronics. They have all the scoreboards. Came in and sat down with me and Mr. Martin, uh, probably in November. He gave us a quote, uh, starting price was about fifteen thousand, anywhere up to about thirty thousand for the one out there. If you've been to a game, you know our sound is not good out there. Um, that is also older. So we, we had estimated about twenty, twenty-five thousand to get in a good scoreboard. The, the gymnasium one is also, uh, from nineteen eighty-two or nineteen eighty-four, one of those. So I shot high, as most of us did in our budget, and put that in there. Um, with, we have been talking to boosters. Um, more, and the reason boosters would be able to help with that money because we would look into something along sponsorship.
Yeah.
Um, which would be easier. Plus, it's a one-time cost.
Right.
It's not a, it's not an every-year expenditure. Obviously, that is something that you can take out. Um, and I can go with boosters. I also have mentioned several times the word capital project because I would love to see Eden do one, um, and do it big, um, and include athletics in there. But I know that might be down the road.
It's probably a year or so off just because of how long it takes for those kinds of things.
If it was a year or so off and I, I knew that I could get a scoreboard and maybe a nice field, I would email every person out there and tell them I will run around holding up the score of that football field.
I was, I was thinking manual.
I could do the manual. I could run around with the score if I had to. And you could delete that. And I could keep modified and get a capital project if I could get it. Um, but, um, I could work.
Cutting deals left and right up here, aren't you? Okay.
Uh, but I, boosters and I were, we were set. Once we put it in the budget, we kind of put it on hold about working on it. Um, I did research, uh, other companies. The problem with them is I don't really know them and they're online and they go cheaper, but I don't really know the product that I'm getting and I'm a little weary of that one. Where I know Dectronics, he lives, you know, up in Boston and he's there.
They're not going to be real excited to fix something that he got offline.
Yeah. And, and a little weary to spend, you know, ten thousand on one offline and stuff.
So you're saying you have, you don't have the ability to fundraise the full thing now, but if it was part of a bigger project, you could fundraise part of it? Okay. And right now the sixty thousand's in your numbers.
It's in the budget.
Okay.
But like I said, I understand that. I, I understand that one. And I, it's much easier for boosters to assist on this than something else.
It's not more tangible at one time, yeah.
But we could take it out of the capital budget too for.
Repair budget.
Construction budget that we have, it'd be voter approved, much like the Cogen.
Right.
Could we run it through at the same time as the Cogen?
No, because it's not really a repair. It's a replacement.
Could it be a different capital?
Again, you know, you can talk with Ron Mandrake and he has to think what would be inappropriate to use.
Okay.
I've got big plans.
Dome Stadium.
You haven't seen it after my plan. He's, he's got big plans.
All right. So what do we want to do on the scoreboard? Suggestions? Right now the proposal from the administrators is to take it out of the budget, meaning sixty thousand dollar reduction in the budget.
All right. I would say take it out and give it the fact we're putting in. And I would prefer more teachers in the classroom than I would, you know, scoreboard. My opinion. Sorry.
Well, it's, it's okay to have an opinion. Other thoughts?
I agree.
Yep, I, I agree.
It's not just the scoreboard. It's sound, the gym and the scoreboards for the gym.
Two scoreboards. It's not like three different things.
Is it two scoreboards?
It's two scoreboards.
Okay, because that wasn't put in the.
It's the gym and the football stadium. So, I mean, yeah, if you wanted to just do the football stadium, you're looking, um, about twenty, um, fifteen if you wanted to go on the lower end, where it doesn't really say anything and the sound, it has about sound. Um, and just hope that the gymnasium one doesn't break. And again, my capital project has to give a new gym.
So a decent scoreboard out there is about twenty, twenty-five, you said?
Yes.
With sound?
Yeah. If you.
All right. Let's.
Can we look at the possibility of, can we look at the possibility of sharing that? Like matching funds between sports boosters and district?
If we, you know, if we funded it now, how far you think you'd get boosters with advertising and stuff to cover parts of the thirty?
Well, we would start it on the next week.
But I mean, how far you think you could get? So if it's, let's say it's thirty to get a new scoreboard with sound and everything, how much you think you could get through advertising, whatever else to, towards that?
I'd basically get it.
You could get twenty of the, of the thirty?
I think with advertising, I think most definitely if we followed all the rules and everything was sponsored, the most time I think we could get it. Because you're asking, the problem with like us asking boosters to fund modified every year is you're going to the same wells exactly single time. Where this, I mean, the one problem like we need is that I know Mr. Martin is going to be getting the new, um, sign out in front. And we're trying to go to, up to elementary school. We're trying to go to different people because we don't want to go in the same well. She's talking about. But I think the context that we have for boosters, I think we could get it.
Marissa, I need clarification on sponsorship because I don't believe the district could sponsor. Or again, that might be a thing Mr. Mandrake needs to look into regarding policy and.
Yeah, you can, you can have sponsorships. It's just, yeah.
Because the boosters can't, can't get a sponsor, I wouldn't think.
But they would donate it, right?
Right, yeah. The money can be donated to us through sponsorships.
The money can be donated for us to pay.
The money can be donated by a sponsor to the school to cover that cost, as long as it's the right kind of sponsor.
But say it was.
You can't have a level, man.
You just put a Pepsi sign under, on the sign. It's the whole point of.
We just may, we have to make sure it's not in violation of board policy.
Yes.
Or we can change the policy. All right. So let's do this. So this, here's my proposal. So right now it's sixty. Um, you build sixty into the budget. Um, if it's, call it thirty for the scoreboard you really want, that's going to allow us to do advertising and all that stuff. And you think you can raise twenty of it. So that, let's make this a minus fifty number. And then we'll have to hold off on the gym for now.
You know, I, I just want to speak up and state another fact. Ten years ago, we had eighteen hundred forty-one kids here. Now it's three hundred less. There's fifteen hundred forty-one kids here. I just got to remind everybody.
Right. I'm not sure I'm following you on this.
Be heard.
Where are you, what's, where are you going with that?
Just got to state a fact to remember where we're coming from. And this is an academic. You know, we're talking about sixty grand for the scoreboard.
We just.
And twenty thousand for the music department was a little bit poo-pooed. So, yeah, I'm just bringing in some facts.
Well, what we just heard was they were finding a way to cover most of it and it would only be ten thousand to the district to have the scoreboard.
It, it wasn't even discussed on the music. Is there a reason why? Was the, is the department person from the music here?
What, what, what do you mean? No, no, no. What, what are you talking about?
What money did we poo-poo on the music?
Twenty grand for the, was it twenty thousand? You said it was for instruments that they were performing?
Yeah. We reduced that equipment to the current air level.
They wanted additional money above current funding, right? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
I just, I have clarification on that. Yeah, it would have been nice if you had.
Yeah, not, not right now. It's getting late.
Can we just also look into the, see if we can do this as part of a capital thing with Cogen? Are we going to ask that question?
Yeah, I'll talk to Mandrake about that.
That would need to be on the, in the legal notice. That'll be approved next month.
And that's where now you're saying that, well, we haven't actually decided which way to go with the Cogen too. Okay, we'll check on that. Uh, last one's the athletic trainer. Uh, now, when we started this a few years ago, the thought was if we are, and most districts have this, if we are putting kids out in the field in contact sports, they had to be properly supported. And that's why we, well, price has gone up a little bit over three years, not, not a lot. So thoughts about, uh, athletic trainers?
I'm just wondering, what was the rationale?
I, I, it's one of those non-mandated that we have.
Well, the rationale to put it on was, um, you know, it hadn't been discussed during budget discussions. I was going to take the quote to be approved that last month.
I could definitely, they provide us with, uh, a list at the end of every season, a detailed list of how many athletes they've taken care of, um, and the injuries. And honestly, this day and age with the new concussion policies that have been handed out by the state, I think we are foolish. We use her for PE injuries. We use her for, um, we use her for a lot of things. And I think the district would be very foolish to get rid of a full-time athletic trainer. And if you cut it maybe down a little bit, okay. But, um, with the amount of injuries they take care of right now, it's, anyway. But I understand, it had to be put up there.
No, it's not required, but, yeah.
But no, it wasn't for you.
Can you maybe, for our next drafter, maybe give us a little bit, if you can tune that a little bit, tune that number? You said there was a, you just said that there was a little opportunity to maybe make that a little lower.
Well, we could do what we originally proposed when we brought it to you. Our first thing was not an every day. Right now she comes in every day from two-thirty to five, um, covers all home events of contact sports. She doesn't cover swimming. She covers, um, soccer. If somebody got hurt in swimming and she's at soccer, then she'll go over there.
Right.
But if, she'll only stay from five to seven or five to ten if there's a contact sport. The only team she travels with is varsity football. And she, the only modified JV team she stays for is football because of the injury thing. Um, but it would just be if you wanted to reduce the number of days.
Yeah, that's.
You didn't want her here every day. I mean, we, like today, this week, she's off this week. Where I'm like, no, we don't pay for, you know, and, but that was built into our original budget. We went with no holidays. I'm here over grace, but she's not here over grace. So my coaches get the ice pack and we do that. Um, but she, you know, I called her up. I had a concussion this week and I had to come in. I'm like, come help me out. And they took care of it, you know, for the charter and does that. But, um, it, it would just be eliminating a day. It would be if you wanted to go down from three days or five days to three days.
Okay. Um, I think, either have we don't, you're kind of gambling then. I'm not sure that makes any sense to two less days.
We have, yeah. It's, I mean, we're, the coaches practice every day that we have.
Yeah.
On Saturdays, it's a little risky, but she has something. And they are, the coaches aren't training, but you got broken bone, concussion, tournament event. There's only so much we can do.
Okay. Any other thoughts about the athletic trainer?
I think it's a big safety issue. We put a lot of thought into adding one last year. I hate to see us jeopardize students.
Yeah. I think that one.
The other thing, does that help you out with insurance if somebody comes after you and says, well, you didn't have an athletic, you know, trainer? If you have one, does it help you out at all?
Not really. I mean, we, I know the year before we had the trainer and it yelled at by a bunch of parents whose kids were hurt. But, you know, other than that, they don't, they can't really come after us or anything. Because all our coaches would do would call nine-one-one if there was a real emergency. I mean, I, I just look at it, you know, you're having kids, there was a ref that dropped a month ago and the trainer was doing, using the AED machine on him. And, I mean, you hear all the time with kids with baseball. And, and like I said, the new concussion policy, it's so shaky. Sean and I go back and forth all the time with the concussion policy of who can come back, who's treating this one. And we really don't have to do that much now that we have a trainer.
All right. I think, you think we, are we okay with keeping that?
Yes.
All right. So we take that off the list. Okay, on to the last page. Thank you.
Transportation.
Here what?
A couple here. Bus run.
It's on my next page. On to my last page. All right. We're still working on the one bus run, right?
We do have some information to share though.
Okay.
Uh, we've looked at the ridership on September twenty-first, and this will show you the amount of students riding morning and afternoon, both high school and elementary. And we did the same, Mrs. Hecathorne did the same ridership counts on January eighth. You'll note that one of the things that was suggested, whether it was a, a single run or the double loop as we have now, was eliminating the bus that stops in the Weller subdivision. You can see that's bus route three. And, uh, it's a bus that seats forty-four adults, sixty-six children. We have seventy-eight, uh, rooted, seventy to seventy-eight rooted. And in the morning, it's as few as twenty-four, and the afternoon, as few as fourteen on the high school run.
So you've eliminated that?
No. I'm suggesting, one of the things I've suggested is whether we have the single run or double run, it's just eliminating, eliminating that bus altogether for seven, twelve students, seventh through twelfth grade students.
That's what you're proposing.
That's what I'm proposing.
Yeah. Anybody have any issues with, uh, that proposal?
So we have to provide, um, buses to Catholic schools and.
Yes.
Yep.
State law.
Up to fifteen there, but fifteen or seventeen miles.
Fifteen miles.
I know we talked about this a little bit last year, but I'm trying to remember if you could identify specific streets or if you had to say, you know, within a quarter-mile radius of the school, for example. I mean, can, can we do this? Can we say this subdivision's not being transported? As opposed to, you know, somebody on the opposite side that's just as close, just will get a ride? Is that, do we know if that's?
That's a good question.
Is it legal?
I don't think so, no.
But I think there's state regulations.
There's a, uh, K fours cannot walk more than one mile, um, five eights, two miles, I believe. And nine-twelves cannot walk more than three miles.
Yeah. What she's asking is can we pick the areas that.
Can we pick the areas?
We don't know, so we'll, we'll have to check that one.
So is this something that's at least of interest enough that we should pursue it more?
Yes.
What, what, uh, what problems would we foresee, Mr. Schaefer? I mean, there's always going to be somebody that still wants that bus. What do you, if somebody doesn't want to walk or can't walk, what do you think?
When you say can't walk is that they're on crutches or something?
Doesn't want to, don't want to.
Then they got to find a ride. If, if that's, if that's what the policy says, because we would have, we would have to write a policy for that. But.
It looks like there's too many kids on most of these bus runs for one bus run. It doesn't show that.
That's because she, you know, they're over routed because our actual ridership is less. You know, she might route seventy-eight on a sixty-six passenger bus and we have twenty-two ride.
Oh, I see. So you have more buses. Just one bus run. If you had one bus run.
Yeah, more students.
More students.
To the bus run.
Okay.
Is that number eleven, route eleven?
Yes, route eleven.
So there's, how many are supposed to be on there, Mr. Schaefer? Thirty-one?
Uh, this is a special, this has special ed students on it.
Oh, okay. Okay. Okay.
She has thirty-one routed.
So. Is this a, a handicapped bus? The bus could be a regular-sized bus?
No.
It's a regular-sized bus, but they're, you see the note in the far right column, it's a.
Right. Special ed?
Yep.
What about, tell me about number thirteen. What's going on with that one?
Why do we have a big bus?
That's, I mean.
Private schools.
Practice or not.
Well, we got a big. Well, we got a big bus, so-
Well, it might need a wheelchair access.
Number 13, there's only seven people routed. Well, number 13, there's seven people routed. We're using a 44 66 passenger bus.
And that may be because of timing and there's no other small vehicle available. I, you know, I honestly don't know.
Can we get this with the routes lined up next to each other and sent out to us so we can kind of-
You mean list, list all the routes and where they're going?
So we route here, no, we have the routes, and then we can see the high school, and then we can see the elementary next to it. So we can kind of repair the numbers. Right now, it's, it's not as easy to read.
It's all done with a software program, isn't it?
It's in Excel.
Excel?
Yes, it's in Excel.
I mean, the plotting of the routes is supposed to be-
We, we own a program, the district does, that should be utilizing it, right?
I think she's used it some. How much have we used it?
Last of us, I think this is, we own a dump truck that we don't utilize.
It's supposed to be updated.
The software's supposed to be updated?
The routing's supposed to be updated.
Oh, the routing's-
Do that dump truck.
The routing's-
If they're different, I don't know.
Okay, so if we could get this list with the numbers next to it, and then some estimates on cost for the next meeting, that'd be good.
And also, see, if we get to sell that dump truck and see how much money we get for that, that's a dump, is not utilized.
Yeah, there should be something to do with it.
Before it rusts out sitting there.
Oh, I know.
Yeah. Can we go over some of that?
You might want to talk to Lorraine. I won't be able to do that between that or-
Come on.
We should, we should get a fry and not do that.
We'll talk to Lorraine about that.
You know what, you might want, we, we can probably talk to the town. They may wanna share it for some purpose.
Or buy it.
Or buy it. About the Boys and Girls Club.
Do you need a dump truck? Everybody uses a dump truck.
Hey, where's that?
We also have some information, not to change the topic.
We use it for student aid.
We also have some information regarding our existing fleet of buses and the projected need for buses if we were to go to the single bus run. This is probably more than we can cogitate on for tonight, but it's at least a starting point to look at. And the second handout is side by side comparison, current runs, number of drivers, number of buses, amount of hours, amount of mileage, and then the same information for the single bus run scenario. But as I've said to Mr. Cerny, Mrs. Pinker, it's a pretty complex thing. And we're doing the best we can to get through it. It's not in our immediate area of expertise.
Okay, let's take a look at that one. All right, so we'll keep plugging away at that one. And we said, keep the one, the Weller one on the list. And then the last one we have on the list is reduce cleaner by six hours per week. Something everyone, you guys are, Mr. is a couple that can work?
Yeah, this is actually at Eden Elementary. And it would, if we're just re-tasking the way we do things, but it would have an overall reduction in the cleaning force within the district by six hours.
Okay. Anybody have any issue with that?
I'm sorry, what I did?
Reducing, relocating cleaning resources for a total of six hour reduction.
No, I don't know.
Who else?
You know what, I'll be, I'll be really honest with you. I did take a look at that and I was like, I couldn't believe how many people that we have on the custodian. But I'll be honest with you, I really don't know, I mean, they're huge buildings. I hate to clean one. I wasn't helped too, but if that's the best that you think that we can do.
The number for custodial staff in that budget book, that includes other people, right, just cleaners?
Find it, it's in here.
Mr. Schaefer?
Say that again?
The custodial number that's in that budget book, that, that covers more than just cleaners, right?
What page are you on?
I don't know what page Barb's on, but I know I saw that number when I looked at the book too. I, I was wondering if it had more than just, what was classified custodial?
That would probably be everything under building and grounds, I assume. But let me find the page.
Page 20. 10 cleaners, two custodians, four laborers, two maintenance mechanics.
Okay.
20?
Page 22.
20. Anybody have any issue with keeping that one on the list and going, going with that?
Nope.
All right, I think that gets us through the list.
Okay, so you went there.
Actually, that's where your question, you've got, you've got this list here. And you've got it in another spot that there's like, and I don't, I mean, you can clarify it. Now, on page 25, there's custodial maintenance. You've got, you've got 18. I mean, you know, one page has two, one has 18, and then there's a third page. On page 20 and 25, both have 18.
Just one me?
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's my job?
Yeah, that's you.
I'll just turn around on that.
What's another one here?
Pushed over to your space, I'm sorry.
Oh, is it in there? Okay. I looked it online the other day. Did it, I hope it prints it out?
Yeah, we figured it out.
It's out. It's like 71 pages or something like that.
All right. Barbie, looking for something specific?
No, I don't have it right here.
Okay, fine, let's, let's move on, because we're getting good light here. Okay, that covers the budget list. We do have, I was, we're still patiently out there. Is he still here? Mr. Jones still here?
He's here.
Where's that? There he is. He fell asleep over in the front row. Sorry. You weren't listed on the official agenda. I knew you were here, but we could've had you talk sooner. But you got to see all the fun. So, as all of you know, we've seen emails, we've got two retirements in the tech area. And Mr. Jones is now a one man band over there. So we've asked him to figure out, now that he's the most senior guy, how he'd like to see things kind of shaped over there and start talking about some ideas on that. So we asked him tonight to come, start helping us figure that out.
First of all, we just sit there and, everybody get back in touch with the head of the department and talk about programming and stuff that we have. And just have some good discussions about where we can move it to in the future. I think it's helped me a lot, kind of rep my brain. What I tried to do was, and this is similar to, I think most of you got this email, I did send it. I think I got to everybody. I didn't hear them reply. But I just wanna kind of go through this. And this is the direction I'd like to see us move in. And I think it is important because most of you, I don't think any of you were board members when I started here. And I know that's past precedent. One more time, not too long ago, we did have five and a half technology teachers by department. And right now, the two retirements that are taking place this year, that leaves me, and I know currently there is one position that's in the budget, to hire a full time faculty member. But it would be extremely detrimental to the students and the programming options that they have available. If we did not hire at least one other additional person to fill that need in the second requirement that we had. And hopefully, I can explain why to you, if you missed the right, why it's important for our kids to really be, all of our kids to be technologically literate. Because that's not something that state focuses on anymore, other than the fact that you see it in the common core, there's kind of like an asterisk there where it says career readiness. But the truth of it is, that's half of the common core. It's not just math science, English, those are great classes, they're forced, they're needed. But that's not the only thing that's gonna lead our kids to success. That's the truth of it. So I, this is kind of a map that I think can get our kids to that point where they have technological literacy, all of our kids. Right now, in the state of New York, there's a mandatory requirement on all kids that it's called introduction to technology. That's for seventh and eighth grade students. We do half a credit worth in seventh grade and then half a credit worth in eighth grade. That's basically one full time teacher right there. Right now, I believe, because they're all breathing down, we have six sections currently, or we have five?
Six.
Six?
Yeah.
Okay. If we, if you guys chose to take the middle school to five sections, we might be able to fit it, but the class sizes would be astronomically big in a shop where you have tools and children using tools frequently. The numbers will be big. And the time you get over 18 or 20 kids in the shop environment, safety becomes a real issue. So that's, I know that you guys were talking about that earlier with the class sizes and the section numbers. Maybe if you could spread each section out equally, so that each group of five, if you did have 18 kids and 120 kids, that would work. But when you have a section where there's 13 or 15, and then you have another section where there's 24, you know, that's not a good situation to be in, for the kids. And it makes it a lot harder to teach them safety practice because there's just so many of them as well. So regardless, that, that middle school teacher right now currently teaches, Mr. Grappel was rolling with sharing that position. Some of you, you know, each one of them sharing, teaching will basically half and half. But you could take one full time teacher that, you know, have them teach those sections all year round. Seventh and eighth grade run at the same time. So you might have one of the seventh graders in there, let's say period two, and then period three, period four, and then you could have a section of eighth graders. Just so you know, it's not like you're setting one half of the year and that being the second half of the year. We used to, until a few years ago, and it's changed. At the high school level, when I, I talked to Mr. Grapp about this for a couple of years, and I think that this would be an extremely valuable course for all of our kids to have before they leave high school. I would like to have, have a mandatory technology class that focuses on, I would be, for lack of a better term, I would say simple technical life skills. And we cover everything from how to check the wiring and switch at your house, to see if it's functioning properly, to make sure your tires are inflated properly in your car. Truly technical, you know, technical skills for life. How to wipe out the light problems, how to measure, you know, accurately. I don't think enough of our kids are needing those fundamental skills. And you as homeowners realize how much money it costs and try to have somebody come in and do all those things for your vehicle owners. You know, it's, it gets more expensive every day. So at least if they can leave some fundamental technical life skills, I think that they're, they'll be moving in the right direction. And they don't have to, you know, it doesn't have to be their main focus. It's just a class that's gonna help them in the, in saving other joy. Right now, there's 24 credits required for our students to leave our school with graduation, you know, diploma. I don't think asking them to get one more credit is asking too much. I think it will help them eventually, like, to be able to solve some of the simple technical problems that they might encounter. So that's what I'm proposing, moving forward for missions, instituting that next year.
So it's a new class?
Yeah, it'll be a new class.
Yeah.
Where we stand right now, currently, under high school electors, I kind of have it broken down into three different clusters. The first is the, what I would consider to be foundational cluster for the kids that are interested in architecture, engineering, and manufacturing. The higher end professional type technical careers where you have to go someplace to get, well, at least if you're going to be a professional, you have to go get accreditation, you have to get a bachelor's degree, and then plus, you send this application. So if you look right there, four out of the five classes are drawing related directly to drawing. You've got DGP, which is an introductory drawing class. Then the kids, the second level will move on to architecture project presentation. The third level would be construction, manufacturing, graphic, and then the fourth level is advanced gadget ownership. And to kind of backtrack on Mr. Grapp's comment earlier about how when two classes are combined, it definitely compacts the schedule. I can attest to that personally, Mr. Olman can attest to that personally. We started doing this 40 years ago. I agreed to, when scheduling changes were happening, I agreed to, I met with Mr. Banks, I met with Mr. Hassett, and I agreed to start combining some of the drawing classes, that's what we want. So I'm simultaneously teaching two drawing classes at one time. Mr. Olman will be teaching two photography classes at one time, two media classes at one time. And it's, it's not that difficult because the subject matters are so close. But what it does do is it pro give it some of the kids, there's no question about it, being able to get into those classes. Because instead of offering them the same things at different times, you narrow the opportunity down because they're offered less frequently. So if they can't fit it in there, you know, sometimes they have to try to double up. Or I've seen the number of independent study children, as soon as I have, go way up. And that, you know, that's okay too. I can be flexible with that. I can all the team on staff is flexible with that. But there comes a point where you have to say, it is affecting the instruction. It's affecting what I can do, the level that I can take my top kids at, or two, gets impacted because of that. Because you have less curriculum you can cover. That's what a loyal staff does. I mean, they aren't learning. But we certainly push that potential a little bit. And I just wanted to make you guys aware that that's something you should know, having coming, you know, again, a lot of these are decisions before you guys, where you remember some of the work. So I think it's important that, you know, when they realize what was there before. The second group of classes that we teach is, I would say, communications, media based, and that is Mr. Olman's area of specialty. This would be people, I would say, who are either getting into artistic type of career after high school, directly after high school, are going to college for, and or getting into production, some type of video media production. And I'll address that a little bit later on, once I get through the last cluster, I want to probably write. I don't pretend to be an expert in Mr. Olman's area, and certainly don't think he's an expert in the graphics area. So I'm doing my best to speak for them. The last class, the group of classes would be our foundational cluster. And these are the ones surprising me. And you would think with the number of, I would say, very college orientated students that we have in this district, because I think the majority of them are, they plan on going to a four year institution. It's surprising every semester that these, these particular courses are always, always a goal. Kids love woodworking, it's a great skill set to have. You can go right down the line with all these, and then you have the advanced level woodworking class. Mr. Olman, I could be wrong, Mr. Grappel, doesn't teach those at the same time as well. So again, he's made the shift as well to try to make it easier for the scheduling of all the kids, trying to get them into the classes. Staffing, this is, the best thing I can say is, this is what I was hoping for. Obviously, going with the budget numbers, I, I see now it's probably a wishful thinking, but I figured it can't hurt to ask. Obviously, the first teacher, as I already mentioned, we've been teaching the seventh and eighth grade class exclusively. And I would really like to do that with whoever we decide is going to replace with the records as well. I would like to have a designated person in the middle school and have them focus on that curriculum. I think it's harder to spring them through to junior high and high school than it is to focus on that area of specialty that you're supposed to be the best at and really put everything you have into that. So when we're, when we're looking at candidates to replace those two positions, I would like to hopefully field somebody who is kind of a middle school specialist. That's, that's what their background is. Additionally, I would also like to find somebody who has a very broad range, very broad skill set to fill that second position we'll be retiring to focus on in high school. Somebody who's comfortable with the media classes, somebody who has a lot of experience. Again, I can tell you more when that time comes, but those aren't a high area of specialty. When you have 20 classes, 20 different courses in a catalog, it's tough to be an expert in all of them. So we kind of gravitate to what our most natural areas are. And then if we have- So we kind of gravitate to what our most natural areas are, and then if we have to teach something else, well, obviously, we can get certified to do that, but just taking down the road a little bit. So that would cover the first three positions, and the fourth position that I have in here will be, my original intention was try to recover the position that we lost when Mr. Roman retired a couple of years ago. I definitely think that it hurt the programming options for the kids, what was available. Like I told the board members that were here at the time, I certainly wouldn't want it to sit in your seat, made those decisions, I know they were hard decisions, it's never an easy thing not to replace a staff member, but I try to come up with some creative ways to recuperate that position. Realistically, unfortunately, I don't think, from what I've seen right now, I don't think the savings would be great enough to try to get that fourth position back. Basically, what I was looking at was how many kids we currently have going to Bosse's programs where you can have crossover, and I could bring those students back in-house, and we could try to assimilate them into our programming and adjust our curriculums. But one of the nice things about being a technology teacher is we could follow, there's four different sets of standards we could follow according to American State, and all of them would be integrated in a common core, depending on, you know, where your curriculum is, how perfect it is. So that's kind of the menu we teach, so we could kind of adapt our instruction to fit the student population that we had at the time, maybe we were to get that fourth position back. Unfortunately, when I look at the numbers, I don't think the numbers are there this year, and who knows what will be next year, but that's totally dependent on how many kids decide to sign up for Bosse's program, and where you have that overlap. So it's kind of a gray area.
Is that the kind of thing you would need to get started at some point, to ever build enough?
Yeah, it would be something that we would have to make the kids aware of it early enough in the scheduling process, and say, hey, you know, here's another option, instead of going to Bosse's, let's say, for CAD, not that we have a lot of kids do that, but instead of doing that, you know, why don't you stay in-house? But we do actually, we have much more, I would say, the general population of students and numbers that we used to have going to Bosse's, at least in the areas where there's cross-overs, with what we teach, I think it's less than we used to. So we are teaching our kids in-house programming, but I think we could do a better job with it. It's not to say that I'm not a whole new student. And there's another benefit too, I know Mr. Sury and I talked about this, I think our kids get a much better education in terms of English classes they take, and math classes they take by staying here as opposed to going to Bosse's. And that's right from their mouths. When I have kids tell me I don't want to take English because this teacher's tough, that doesn't tell me the teacher's bad, it probably tells me the kid doesn't like to write or read. So, and I know those teachers are talking about, they have actual results for their students. So, that's kind of another element of having the kids stay here instead of having to go to Bosse's. Not only is there, could there be a cost savings for us, but you're also having more teachers teach our kids in our building. As far as the credits go, what we have in the tech department right now, all the tech classes that the kids take are half for full-credit technology, and both of those apply for that sequencing that the kids need to have in order to graduate. So we have quite a few kids that get their sequencing obligation taken care of, down in the tech end of the building. We do have internship opportunity that we've been doing for years with our kids who get to our fourth-level drawing class, and we run that with an architectural firm called Yom and Wright Architecture. And those kids also have the opportunity to get, we have an articulation agreement with the ECC, and the kids that go on from the ECC's architecture program, if they pass, they have to pass a base test. If they choose to go to ECC and they take that base test, then they would get some of those credits that they took with me applied towards the program we have at ECC. I, the weird thing is that a lot of the kids don't take advantage of it, because when they go to ECC, they know the drawing part of it, but they use a different software. So this full disclosure, it's out there, but a lot of the kids, we happen to use a different software than they normally do. And I'm actually working on right now, with my world of tech class, I've been discussing articulation agreement with the precision machining program at the ECC North Campus, and that one I think we're a little bit closer aligned with. I just have to work out some of the fine details, and hopefully, as early as next year, I can get that up in proportion for the kids. And that would be primarily for the kids who take one of the two upper-level drawing classes, because that's one of those classes the kids get into using the 3D modeling software, which goes directly into the machine. So they would have to take the drawing class, and they would have to take world of technology, which is a practical engineering class, which that's the one we build bikes in. So they'd have to have both of those classes in order to earn some credits at ECC, precision machining, or initiation. I'm not going to waste your time on lies and poor, we can do that in the future, but really what I wanted to do is just kind of break our kids into a couple of different categories on the second page, and number one, we go to what I spoke about earlier, where when we have a student who maybe is on a total professional track, multiple AP credits, you know, they're going to be medical doctors. That's awesome, that's great, that's what they want to do, that's the passion, but they should still have some basic technological literacy, they should be able to solve simple technological problems on their own. And most of them, as good as they are with this, they can't fix anything, so you show up. Unfortunately, a lot of us are busy working, to be able to sit down and show our kids those things now. So that's one of the things I would like to do, and that's particularly for the kids I'd like to address, therefore, you know, the need for that high school level course for all students. But then also, number two would be our kids who are really our technology-centered kids. And I would say, realistically, you could probably narrow that down to a hundred and fifty or two hundred kids in this building who take pretty much every tech class that we have to offer. They come out of our shops at a distinct advantage compared to other kids that are their age, even without having those backgrounds, experience in classes, you know, having the ability to participate. And that, again, that's coming from them, it's not me patting myself on the back for making part of the numbers, that's what my students have told me, because I ask for feedback from them all the time. How did you do when you went to college? You know, when you went to Elfrin, how did you do? What didn't we do a good job of? Because I want to be able to offer them what they're going to need when they get out. Down at the bottom, I just, real quick, before we were meeting today, I said I want to go see what type of jobs were going to be available, and these are right for Western New York, or to the New York State Department of Labor website, and you can see the ones that, I actually hit them highly, but they look like they're kind of blurred out a little bit. You can see the ones starting with post-secondary vocational training on the right-hand side, the aircraft mechanics. Favorable would be the likelihood of people getting that job, that job being available through the year 2018, at the top, it says 2018. And then the number would be the third number, the number of jobs they anticipate having. But if you go through those, and even without looking at indirect correlations, out of those favorable jobs that are listed there, nine out of the twenty-six directly relate to a strong technical skill set without any post-high school work. Those are jobs you could walk into, and many of those, as you can see, some of the descriptions of them, are going to be good-paying jobs, good benefits, and there's a lot of opportunity for the students out there that don't want to necessarily go to college anyway. So we can give them a skill set, they can make some money with, and then if they want to go to college, it gives them a way to support themselves to try to achieve that degree if they decide they go. But that's, that's pretty much my spiel, that's all I wanted to say. And can I answer any questions, anybody have any questions?
Just one, of these three clusters, these are all courses that we currently offer.
And right now, you're thinking to get any kind of cost saving, as you will, for pulling things back from Bosse's right now, that it's not looking too feasible?
Yeah, I don't think that the cost saving could be there this year. However, it's definitely something I would like to look at in the future.
Okay.
We can still try to, you know, keep some of those kids in-house.
Yeah.
Certainly make them aware of what we have to offer. I can modify some of the instructions we teach, you know, for those kids.
Okay.
And I can adjust the curriculum accordingly. Again, we have the luxury of having different sets of standards to work with. So we can make them career-based, we can make them math-science-based, we can do a little bit of both. But I think the key thing is making sure that we can replace those two requiring positions. The two people we have need, we have phenomenal infrastructure right now, and to have one of our labs, or a couple of our labs sitting on the news, because we don't have the teaching personnel to put in there, I think it's not doing our place justice. I think that room occupied, a lot of the staff teacher in there, to give them proper instruction and to let them learn by doing, which is what we do as staff teachers.
How many students do you think you could, how many students are in Bosse's right now that you think you could bring back?
Judging by what I saw so far, that was the information I got from Mr. Banks, there's only about twelve, maybe thirteen students where the curriculums would kind of mesh with each other.
Why do the kids, why do they want to go there and not stay here? What do they offer there that's better?
Some of them through avoid taking classes here, you know, other classes they don't want to take. Again, that's coming from their mouths, they tell me they don't want to take a hard class.
And what's the cost on each student?
That I don't know.
We don't know.
I don't know the economics of it, I just don't think the savings would be enough.
Yeah, especially with the reimbursement. But it's all through the reimbursement too, though, right Lisa?
It's all what?
It's all reimbursed, though.
Yeah, we get some Bosse's saved on it.
What percent?
I believe about seventy percent, sixty-five, seventy percent.
So it really works against you?
Like, is it, I mean, maybe eight, nine thousand dollars a student?
A student?
If you only had three of these positions in that four, how would your plan change?
Immediately, my plan would be to continue to offer the current clusters that we have, but for instance, I know right now, I have a group of kids who are, who'd like to see the robotics program come back. We used to have a fighting robotics team that we ran kind of as a club activity, they would like to see the robotics come back. So what we could do, they already have an electricity and electronics lab, very nice lab, we could bring robotics in as part of the curriculum for the electricity electronics class. And I've been very lucky, we've had some very good sponsors with the motorcycle building, and I think I could work and try to get some sponsorship for robotics program, to get some resources in there, and quite a bit we have already, but they're only for the small robots. We used to do three different classes, we did a hundred and twenty-pounders, and then we did forty-pounders. But, and that's just one example I'm thinking of, you know. It would really depend where the kids' interests are, and that's what I'm trying to, that's why I think it's so important to have both of those positions back, so that we have kids that are really interested in, let's say, more of the traditional cluster, where they like to do woodworking, and they like to do, you know, plastics, work with plastics and stuff. There's always things we can do to try to teach them about those skills, and then have them be beneficial at the same time. Whether it's signage, you know, that we're making for the town, or whatever. I always think the projects are best going back. So if you can tie your instruction into a practical project, and then take care of somebody else's needs at the same time, I was thinking of Mrs. Paul Carroll's scoreboard, I'm like, can you make an old-school scoreboard, put the numbers on it? Probably good to get a slide here.
I have a question. If it was twelve students, and we're just guesstimating at seven thousand dollars each, that would be eighty-four thousand dollar savings.
Correct. It's not savings, because we would get, how many was it, the second?
About seventy percent.
Only seventy percent of it?
Eight.
So it'd be fifty-six thousand.
Right.
So, that's nothing to, I mean, that would be...
No, no, it's not saying it wouldn't be beneficial, I just don't know right now, bringing that fourth person in would be, you know, I was looking up on the board, and we're talking about a lot of other people, other programs taking hits. I think that if I bring those, if I can get those two positions back, we can continue to maintain and expand our programming, and then maybe next year, we can take a little bit, let's try to bring some of those kids from Bosse's back.
Well, the other thing is, you're talking about robotics, bringing that back, and you're talking about plastics, you're talking about all these different things, would your staff be able to adjust to all those different things?
I would make sure, just because I would want to be heavily involved in the interview process. I've been lucky, we have professionals who are technology teachers in Western New York, there's about a hundred and fifty members, and so I'm familiar with most of the teachers, whether they're just starting out, or they've been in the schools for thirty-five years. So I have a pretty good handle on those skill sets when they come in, and we've been very fortunate, we've had some incredible student teachers over the last eight or ten years, who I think would, a couple of them went through a very nice job.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Great, thanks Steve.
Tech seven is a half-year course, right?
Uh, tech seven is a half-year, and tech eight's a half-year.
And is it a half-year by state requirement, or is it a half-year just by the way we do it?
It's a half-credit.
It's actually, it's actually more than the requirement.
What is the, do you recall what?
The requirement is twenty-seven-five weeks of stuff, so basically the equivalent of thirty.
Thirty weeks.
That you need over the course of, really, between three, six, seventeen. Yeah, because a lot of middle schoolers really six, two, eight, so for us, we need to get on the base thirty weeks, and it's just more manageable if you do it at half a year. It's actually more than that.
But it's thirty, for us, it could technically be thirty weeks over the course of their seventh and eighth grade career.
Let's see, we have a meeting scheduled for Wednesday. We put that in the schedule because Lisa's done on Thursday, so do we still want to meet on Wednesday and get a updated version of kind of what we talked about tonight, see what the numbers shake out in?
I'll be out of town, I won't be able to.
So you don't care either way. What does everybody else think? Still want to stick with that and try to look at updated version, or we want to wait till our, I guess it'll be our in March regular board meeting, when we might be back talking about a bunch of stuff? Thoughts?
We can have a quick meet, I don't think we'll go as long as tonight, but...
No, yeah, I agree.
Is there enough, will there be enough time to?
Yeah, I should be able to get some.
Take what we talked about, kind of put it in or out, and just update and see where we're at, kind of give us a little bit of a scorecard.
Steve, I have a question. Since everything else is on the table, did we look at the administrative costs of the district, where we, like, what's mandatory, what's not?
Well, we asked Mr. Schaefer to come back and look at some of the administrative stuff when they were doing it. Right now, your thoughts are around some position sharing, looking at that, right?
Right. Last week, Bosse's was on recess, as well as we were on recess, but in talking to Dr. O'Rourke and a few of the superintendents around us, there's been some talk about sharing curriculum services and things like that. We don't have much more than preliminary talks, though.
Could we get something that does what's man, what is, we're getting everything that's mandatory for the teachers, can we see what's mandatory that we have to have for administration also?
Well, we give a different twist on a request I made Mr. Schaefer today, and see if that fits in there, is, I asked him to, and Lisa, we had a contract meeting today, so we brought this up when we were talking, if we could go through for all the non-mandated stuff, things in the district, and let's say what ten percent of all of those are worth, and then ask the groups that represent them to say how they would restructure themselves in that environment with ten percent less. So I think that would get at, in that listing would be non-mandated administrative costs. So I think that would get at, in that listing would be non-mandated administrative costs. So I think we could get there. So we think that would also cover that, too, right? Non-mandated administrative costs.
I'm trying to recall that list.
I don't have anything on my list.
Offhand, it is things like, that list you're talking about is things like kindergarten, sports, extracurriculars.
Right.
Primary art and music.
I think psychologists.
Yes. Guidance counselors, those are the things that are like on that list.
Well, let's add, let's add the administrative as well.
Mr. Burns's question is, okay, the state says you need a principal in each building, you need an administrator in each building, does the state say you have to have a curriculum person?
Correct.
And that's more what you're getting at, right Mike?
Yeah, but I'm more curious of just every position, you know, what do we have to have and what don't we have to have, since we're doing it with everyone else.
On the administrative end?
Yeah.
Administrative support, yeah. But if we, if we added that into the non-mandated list, that would cover it there, we can feel for that. We'd at least see the items, and we'd see a relative cost. So if we add that, that'd be good. I don't know if you'll have any of that from Lisa.
I don't know, we don't have time to do that, but we're working on it.
Could you try to find out the, could you try to find out the cost of the Bosse's students?
We're at 7 o'clock Wednesday.
I have that, I just don't have it with me.
Can you bring that on Wednesday?
Thank you.
Okay, so we're, we're on for 7 o'clock Wednesday, same, same place?
Yeah.
Anybody have any final questions, comments?
You did ask me to get the dues that we pay, unfortunately, I thought I had copies, I don't, I emailed them to you, if you want, I can put it up on the screen.
Just send it out, we'll take a look, we'll take a look at that Wednesday.
So that was, I can email them.
Anything else? Were we still going to be meeting during the day with teachers at all?
I know Mr. Schaefer sent an email, reaching out to the staff at GLP and the elementary school, asking who might be interested in meeting with us during lunchtimes and.
Lunchtime or after school.
Eden Elementary on Thursday, at GLP on Friday morning.
Okay. I've got one request so far, so.
And I asked them to reply directly to you two.
Yeah, that's the problem, I'm not sure how, how to manage that, because how much time are we allowing? We don't know how many.
No, I think we, I mean, we told them specifically during lunch or after school for the one building, right? And the other one was before school and at lunch, so it was, or just before school?
For Eden Elementary, because it's a full day, it could be at lunch and after school. GLP, it's a half a day with staff development that's required for the DASA training. So that could be during the school day, if they're available, half a day, and it could be, but it's a very abbreviated lunchtime, because they have to get to the staff development.
So now I'm getting emails back from staff saying they want to meet and.
Yeah, we can't do a whole bunch of individual ones, it didn't work, so.
We also think we are going to be able to meet with you at some time, so if you talk up, so we know how to be helpful.
Well, we were here, what, a couple, two weeks ago for lunch, came in, we're in the lunchroom, available, we had to talk to a number of folks during lunch.
There's another, you would like to see, there's another opportunity, we've got to share this one, we've talked to people.
Uh, we haven't scheduled anything like that, we can take a look at it, though.
It's possible, I mean, yeah, I don't know how many were aware that we were there that day.
Do you want to take the lead and try and schedule that with the two groups again?
Well, same.
We can talk to the building principals.
I'm sorry?
They have one out for the entire building.
For the lunch one, right? Yeah.
So I guess my question is to you, I don't know how to manage it, because I don't know, I have requests come in, now it's kind of on us to schedule it all, as opposed to having a place where they can go and sign up and say, okay, I have a 15-minute slot, and this one's taken, and.
We'll do some more work on that, we gotta come up with a plan to get that put together. But we're still trying to do it, if not, we'll try it during the next couple of weeks, if we can't make it this week.
The Boys and Girls Club game night is Friday, and they have a hot number of teams right now, they're looking for one more team. Would the board be interested in putting in a team for that? It's the Quizmaster, it's kind of a trivia guy, it's a fun night.
How many people?
A team can be three to five people.
I cannot make it.
I could get your answer right now, I think. Okay, all right, okay. All right, anything else? Okay, I make a motion to adjourn?
Exactly.
It was over there. All in favor? Close, motion carries. Thanks for coming, everybody.